Yes, sir.
I didn't hear.
Something near and dear to my heart.
Just, we'll just.
Are you rounding this in?
Yes.
Would you lead us in the pledge, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please?
Make sure everyone's microphone's around, please. Commissioner Kramer?
Present.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Present.
Chairman Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Present.
Commissioner Auger?
Here, how do I turn this on?
Press the button, thank you. The button will come red. Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
There we go.
Okay. We now have public comment. Ms. Bailey, would you like to make public comment? Anybody?
You've got 20 minutes.
Any commissioner comments?
Yeah, I guess I would say, just looking at the agenda, you know, and I don't know where everyone else is, but, you know, the potential offer of position, I guess, I'm open that this is just one person speaking, but it seems that if we narrow this down to even one or maybe two, that we would want to go into a deeper dive on references or some other things before we offer a position. So I don't know what else feels on that, but I think I'd be in a, you know, a position to make an offer today. I don't know if that's a sentiment.
Right, I agree. And background checks?
Background checks, yeah.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
I also want to establish a, basically a six-month or one year, if this person chose person or whoever he or she may be, that the next person gets opportunity without the interviews. Just to bring that person, we can decide this meeting here if he or she is, would be a good second place. So first place gets a job, they jump out of it, we can bring that person right in. And I think up to one year would be, if the person still wants it, of course. But I really think to, rather than go through this and hiring, you know, three months, people. I mean, I like Chet, but, you know, you get so much of Chet.
I suggest that we, after commissioner comments, we turn it over to Chet and we have a discussion with him a little bit about the process.
Okay.
We are, we are a special session and we have no one to help us, but we're trying to get the meeting live, online, just so you know, we're not live.
Okay.
Okay, I think we can continue, right?
Right.
Any other commissioner comments before we turn it over to Chet?
Well, probably only what Chet's going to get into, but of course, I understand what Rupi's saying. This board can make that decision within this year, but not beyond that. You know, the next board would decide that. But the interviews would be available for anyone to see and they could easily do that. But so much would depend on whether they're still even available and interested.
And I agree, Commissioner Rexroth, with your, with your statement. I think this is the most important job we're going to do in two years that we've been on this commission and we gotta go slowly. So with that, Chet?
Good morning, everyone. Good to see you.
Good morning.
On the agenda wording, I was not able to preview the agenda beforehand, but I would recommend or say is that if you choose to, you have the option of authorizing the chairman to enter in a contract negotiation, having successful review of references and background checks. But you don't have to make a decision to see. This is the fourth county industry, I've been involved this past year, everyone's there for it. And one, they made a decision that day. Another one, they opted, they called for two days. And the third one, they brought two people back for a third round of interviews. So it really is up to the seven of you how you wish to proceed. But I think the comment that most of you make, don't rush into it. This is a personal decision. See where you are after four candidates and proceed after that. So I would recommend that if you pick a candidate, you authorize a chairman, and usually it's myself and the chairman who start negotiations, but it's pending a successful background. When I got the job here, well, then when they remember, the sheriff was assigned a deputy, did a full background check for me. They went to Charlotte Public Schools, they went to Buckley Schools, they looked at the college and did interviews with people. Did a full background check and then the sheriff issued a report.
We still hired him.
I know, that's what I said.
So really, it's, keep reading your agenda, taking in those interviews today. You have an hour and 15 minutes with each candidate and it really is more of a dialogue. I gave you, I don't think any of you are too shy, but sometimes it's a little awkward for board members. So I just give you some sample topics, certainly not limited to this. You were not able to ask all the questions last time. There may be questions you want to ask on that sheet. You may want to follow up on some comments they made last week or two weeks ago. You may want to ask some more specific things here in Leona County. So it's up to you, in your email, I want to go over, I said to all of you last week, there's some topics you should not cover, I think you might be so sorry. Those are offline in my email. So focus on the issues. I also encourage the candidates to do follow-up questions. If there's some that they missed, that they don't bring to their attention, if they have questions. So really, it's more of a dialogue. And that's why you have an hour and 15 minutes. And usually that's just about the right time.
Would you, would you see us having everybody ask one question, maybe a follow-up question, and just keep going down the row and then the next interview start the other side?
It would look differently, but I think it's.
More organic.
It's fair to have all seven, you're given the opportunity. You don't want one commissioner to dominate and take up from zero time, which I have seen happen. So I'd say ask at least one round and then just have, see where you're at. Just a comment they made made me think about a follow-up question in their comment where you want more details about what they said. So truly, it was kind of an open forum, but be respectful that there's seven of you and each should have a chance. And you could pass, too, like some of you did last time after a couple rounds.
Commissioner Rexroth?
So I, and I guess, you know, adding on to what you said about the importance, and I, I'm not saying this is likely because I think there's some good candidates here, but we're not under an obligation to pick any one of these. If we're not comfortable that we think that that person is a fit, then we go back fishing again.
I think I mentioned the forecast, we actually do three candidates.
Yeah, so, I mean, not suggesting that's the case here, but with your comments, it's, we gotta get the right person.
Do any commissioner, how many commissioners go on site visits for finalists?
You could do that, yes, usually one or two could do that. The kind with the back, where the people are, if you would do that, yes.
If they were.
If they were. An equal staff, which is a common practice. I think Ty and I both were through it when we were superintendents, where board members, like when I was in, before I got the job in Charlotte Public, two board members came to Buckley and looked at the staff there and got feedback. I think that probably happened to you when you were superintendent, too. So that's common. So there is no set formula, it's whatever feels proper for real or common. And we can talk about the next step. I say go into this open-minded, you have four candidates here, and see where you are afterwards. All debate, test, place in public. If you take a break, be careful not to clock them on themselves. The classic example, I think I mentioned before, is one school in Northern Michigan took a break for the finalist. The gentleman was in the bathroom, and while they were in the bathroom, they were talking about what your candidates could bring back. Or someone in the stall over here, entire discussion. So the school board, the school board had to do the search all over again because they were violation of openings act, because they were discussing the candidates while they were in the restroom. If you break for lunch, I suggest you not vote as a group to watch. The perception will be, whether you want to do it or not, or maybe dialogue going on. So truly, you need to be open-minded about this.
If it's okay with everybody, we'll start by having the candidate reintroduce himself and maybe ask him, I'd welcome him back and ask him if he's done any homework since his last interview and what has he found and how did the meet and greet go with the staff. And then we'll go to Jamie and she can ask the first question and right down the row. And your first question may stimulate a follow-up, so that's one or and a follow-up, and then keep going. Then the second candidate will start on the other end and do the same thing, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Good to meet you.
Do we?
This is also stressful for the candidates. So when you debate afterward, be respectful of them. Obviously, be honest with yourselves. Try to keep your comments positive and focus on the candidates. Because it is stressful for them and it is broadcast hopefully live to people who listen. Out of respect for the candidates, you know, be honest, be firm if you have concerns, state them. And I'll make you initiate a speech, but just be respectful of yourselves, too.
Didn't you say that Michael came last night just to be here on time?
He actually came, he went and came here at, I think 9:15 he was here, yes. Yeah, so he definitely was here on time this time.
Shall we take a 15-minute break and come back and make sure our videos work?
They weren't out live, so.
Everybody okay with, with adjourned for a bit?
Each person's back.
We will reconvene and let's make sure everybody's microphone is on. Thank you, Mr. Velsky, for being back here with us today and we welcome you back. And we're going to spend the next hour, hour and 15 minutes with you to learn more about you and it's fairly informal, we want dialogue, we want you to be able to ask questions, we'll ask questions. Before we do that, I wondered if you'd be willing to share your thoughts since last time you interviewed with us and what you've learned about the county and what you're thinking.
Sure, well, first of all, I want to thank you for having me back, I'm honored. Also want to mention the job description that was written for this, because I've seen a lot of them. Probably one of the best I've ever seen, really, really well-done in terms of what's expected, kind of the dual role of policy and administration. So I want to commend you for that and commend Chet for that. I really, I would, you know, I teach, I would actually use that in a class, show people how to write a job description. And I also want to thank Michelle, she, I wanted to read about the annual presentations, some of the early monthly presentations, so she helped guide me through your website. So since last time, I've read a lot about the county, I've read the plan and the capital budget, obviously been through the financials. And, you know, what I, what I came away with is, one, the state government is very, the laws that govern you are very well-done. So they build into it best practices. So for example, when you do the plan, land use plan, you have to also do the capital budget. Many places don't do that, you know, that allows you to integrate them, right? So if there's going to be some sort of development, that's where you're going to infrastructure. And if you can plan that out, you know, that allows you to anticipate what the capital costs are going to be and how you're going to fund them. So I thought that was, and you complied with that, and I thought the documents were very well-done and very impressive. You know, the capital budget had a, you know, the right sequencing of what project you choose, you know, it's emergency or it's going to curate and cost a lot to replace, so that was good. You know, the other, the other thing that I saw is that there's a lot of not-for-profits that engage with the county and push a lot of issues. And I think that's a good thing, but also can be difficult. We need to, you really need to kind of marshal those efforts so you're not duplicating things. And I know, you know, one of the issues is affordable housing, so I have some thoughts on that. And, yeah, that's really it. I mean, I think, you know, I think in the dialogue, some of my other thoughts will come out. But I, you know, I think my role here would be to work with the staff so that you don't have to, you don't have to worry about it. You know, if the administration works well and delivers the sort of services internally and externally that it's expected to do, that should make your lives easier. You know, you're not going to get the constituent complaints and things like that. And then the other thing is on policymaking, I, you know, I think you have a hard choice to make. You have people that run a county. I would just say this, you're not going to find anybody better in terms of suggesting policy. And I, I follow all the organizations that publish stuff on state and local governments. And while it's ultimately up to you, you know, the administrator's not a legislator, I'm going to bring you ideas. I'm going to bring you ideas about the environment, about management, about procurement, whole host of things. And I think that'll, that's the difference between choosing me and somebody else. Administration is something I've done my whole career. Ran, managed 300 people, HR department, facilities. Now, while it's not government, I know that environment because I sat next to a city manager for 16 years doing that with the city, so I'm not worried about that part of it. I just, you know, I would just say this, that I will try to be a change agent. What I've seen of the county, that's not a heavy lift because you've done some really excellent things. You know, my only, my only critique would be this, is you have a lot of good plans in place. The question is implementation and measurement of progress. And when you do that, when you have the key performance indicators implementing a plan, that takes all the noise out of it because that's what you're focused on. And that's what you should be focused on, like what are the results, right? We had a plan to, you know, whether it's a land use plan where we wanted to put 40% in the, in open space and we wanted to have some, you know, tasteful development here, you know, did it happen? Did we work to make it happen? We want to get potholes or repairs from the road commission, you know, we would, you'd have to work with them, too, to say, you know, what's, what's the metric? What are, what's the standard that other counties have? And are we meeting that relative to them? And then are we improving over time? And my feeling is it's almost as good to have a negative result as a positive result because if you're not meeting that metric, that indicates that you need to look at that and see, you know, how can we engineer it better? Technology's a big issue now, too, because there's a shortage of people in government. So one thing is integrating your technologies and, you know, you have different software, different systems for different departments and even the line elected officials. That has to be brought together, too, because that just makes government work better, more efficient. So those are my.
Thank you. Well, we'll start with Commissioner Kramer. We have lots of questions we want to talk to you about. Commissioner Kramer?
Excellent. Thanks for coming back. And since you mentioned KPIs and kind of working with goals and engineering the processes, I am wondering what your goals are going to be at the, potentially the three-month, the six-month, and the 12-month marks? And, yeah, just kind of what you have in mind for those?
Well, I would, I would say the first three months is going to be a lot of listening. So obviously, I report to the board. So I would want to, I want to hear from each one of you, sometimes each one of you, about what are your priorities within your districts? You know, where there might be conflicts that we can try to resolve. You know, it's, it's a politic, it's political in the sense that you have a partisan board. A lot of local governments are nonpartisan, so. But listening to the commissioners, you know, what's your, what are, what do you, you know, I always do the genie test, what are like, if you had three wishes, what would you want to see in this county? And then I think the other thing that's really important is, is meet with the department heads and their staff and hear what they, they think, you know, because they might not be on the same page. You want them on the same page. When the buck stops with you, it might be. I mean, I work on your side with the city manager, so I, I know how that works. And, you know, the city manager used to say, Mike, he could just say no. And, you know, I had people approaching me about a, an arts group that wanted to go in a building we own and the manager said, no, no, we're going to have to clean it up. And you know what? We brought tons of people into town because we did that, right? So if you want to do something, you know, I'll make it, I'll make it happen for you. That's, that's important. But, so, and then I think what's really important is to meet with the line officials, you know, the elected officials here, the sheriff, clerk, and kind of see what their aspirations are, what they're looking to do. As I said before, it's really important to have a person that can get along with these other officials because, you know, you, they have autonomy, it's kind of a dilemma. They have autonomy, but you have the purse. So it's very important you're on the same page with them, right? And I also think getting out to the other local governments, the townships and the villages, and getting to know their administrators, maybe attending their board meetings. So, you know, just kind of really getting, and then the not-for-profit groups, right? Business groups or economic development groups and listening to them. So that you, I kind of take all that in and then come back with ideas for you about a plan. And I, I think John Leonard said life's what happens to you when you make the plans. But I think putting the time in to have a strategic plan that says, okay, this is where Leona County wants to be five years from now, and how do we get there? As I said, you have a good start because some of the documents you have, that Leona, I don't know if they've updated the plant, the land use plan, I know it's supposed to be updated. The last one was, that I saw was like 2022 or something like that. You know, really well-done, speaks about intergovernmental cooperation. You have to have that when you have so many governments. But, you know, coming back to you and saying, let's, let's get together, based on the input I have, here's what I think are the goals of the county. And we all have to kind of agree on that, right? Again, I work for you, so it's not a top-down thing. It's like, I'm going to hear from you, heard from other inputs and say, this is kind of what I see as a goal. And you have, that you have to then ultimately decide on that, right? And then we, and then we say, okay, the goals are here, what are the objectives? And the objectives are like, what's, what's the short-term accomplishment that we're going to have? So, you know, for instance, it would be, let's say sheriff response time, right? You, and again, that's why it's important to get them working with you. You would, you would say, okay, what's on average in a rural county like this, the time to respond on a crime, right? And there's nuances because you say, well, if the metric is, you know, within a minute or three minutes, you know, you might have people speeding and killing people. You know, the police might be driving too fast, right? So, but then there's, so there's a metric for rural counties and then we'll compare it to that and we'll compare us over time, how we're doing. And it's really important not to have too many things. You know, government doesn't go out of business, it's a perpetual entity. So, so, you know, if you pick out too many goals, too many objectives, you're not going to meet them. I mean, my feeling, I actually believe in incrementalism, I mean, pick the most, what's the most important thing that you think? Is it affordable housing? Is it environmental sustainability? Is it just the efficiency and functioning of government technology? And you focus in on that and you get that done and then you move on to the next step. And you monitor it, too. Like a lot of these KPIs can be brought into a finance game. Because what happens when you measure something and if you're not meeting it, that, that means you might need more resources for it. And I, so, hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Mr. Rexroth?
Good morning and thanks for joining us again. One of the major roles, major jobs, and it's kind of the, why the job description is a minister slash CFO, is the implementation of the modernization of our software and systems here in the county as recommended in the agreement report.
Yeah.
Can you give us a, you know, a brief description of how you think you'd approach that and what, what do you think are the challenges in getting that done?
Well, first of all, the technology's out there now. It's just, I mean, it keeps improving. And, you know, the other thing is there are resources out there, too, to help, like MSU, you know, their, their extension program coming to help. But they're, really what you need is a software system. And I know, I know many of the departments, I forgot the name of its base in Michigan, you know, that, that, all, all the inputs, right? The payroll, paying vendors, any sort of movement of cash out of different funds is accounted for through the system. And then it informs, it then informs the financial report, right? The less paper and, and writing and things like that, it's going to, it'll save you money. And not that, you know, you use it to lay people off, but if, if you can be more efficient, maybe you can redeploy somebody or don't replace them after they retire, right? I think the biggest challenge in that is training. You need, you know, whoever you get, you need them to make a commitment to really train the staff. And also, I would even say, you, you know, not that you're going to be doing the work, but like inform you about how, how the software works and what the cybersecurity, you know, a lot of these systems need all of that. And they're not that expensive, you know, for, I mean, this county is well-resourced. So I think, I think I would approach it by saying, let's work with the IT people and say, you know, let's get the old standard, get by them, evaluate them, meet with the people, talk to their other customers, you know, how other counties have used them, how, you know, effective are they at training? Because if you have a staff that's like always calling their help desk, it means they didn't train you well.
Thank you.
Great, good morning. When I, when you were here last time, I took a lot of notes about what you said and I would just wanted to follow up on some of the things I heard, we heard. And then a question, so. Some of the things that struck me was that strategic planning, good strategic planning helps avoid conflict.
Right.
That you are a bridge builder and that helps your effectiveness. Obviously, listening to those involved in achieving those goals. And building up to my question is coalition, building coalitions between the departments. So I'm kind of new to this role as commissioner, but my, I feel like the complexity of our county government with elected officials, department heads, all the different layers. Could you give us maybe an example of something in your past work experience where you brought some of those things that you mentioned to fruition and either helped a situation or avoided a situation that you're pretty proud of?
To kind of the coalition building?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can give you four, I think, good examples. So one was, and I might have mentioned this last time. So I put together a climate protection task force that developed a climate protection plan for our city. And again, it had metrics in it, you know, are we going to reduce the carbon footprint by X? And recyc, how much recycling and, you know, getting electric buses, all that stuff. And so we, as a city, could not do that alone. We didn't have the resources. In fact, someone came to me, because the mayor of Chicago had just hired the first deputy mayor for sustainability, and they said, you know, why can't we hire someone like that? And what I ended up doing is reaching out to our sister governments, the school districts, park districts, the county, and collectively, we could afford it. And we hired someone to facilitate this, this plan. I don't know if they're monitoring it still. I mean, I, I left office, I think it's really important that you don't just have binary where you have results. And so I, that's what I expected. The other thing is, we had a, we had a vote on consolidating three school districts in Leona before I was a mayor. And it was, it was very emotional because it was an army base there and the federal government gives the army base $700 per pupil, but it costs $8,000 to educate. We kind of were an odd thing because most military bases are net positive to communities. But what we had was an army base in the, in the, that wasn't paying property taxes and the district that served it was going under. They, they just couldn't afford, they were losing too much in educating them. And then it starts, so, so there was a vote to consolidate the three. People in the property. People in the property-rich areas, um, were very negative on it. They, they didn't want to bail out the school district. But it also came across, uh, anti-military. And there were quite a bit of diversity in the military base. So it was almost came across as racist, like, oh, we don't want these people in, in our, have to support them in our district, right? And I, I thought it was reprehensible. So they did vote to consolidate and people stopped talking to each other in the community. I was a mayor then, I was a resident. But fast forward, they closed the military base. And the Navy, um, which is in great length, so if you want to enlist in the Navy, that's where you go and list. They consolidated all of it. Um, gave, the Army gave the Navy a piece of land, right? And they wanted to build officers' housing. Um, the officers don't want their kids going to North Chicago schools, a bad school. Want to be in Island Park. And they want to be in Glenview, which is where they closed the Naval Air Station. So we came up with an idea because we were going to have the same thing. We're going to have a $3 million gap for the schools. And the city manager said to me, like, why are, we don't have a dog in this fight. This is the schools. And I said, no, this is the community. And I don't want that sort of division that went on years ago. So we worked out a deal with, uh, Senator Durbin where we, what we did is we said, North Chicago gets 7,000 or 8,000 per pupil. If those people came to Highland Park, the population of military within their borders would go down below 30%. If that happens, they go from 8,000 per pupil to 700 per pupil. They would have been out of business. They would have been absorbed by other school districts. So what we did is we said, okay, North Chicago, we're going to count our kids and the kids in Glenview as your kids to keep you heavily impacted at the 30%. But we're going to share in the revenues with you. And, you know, people were amazed because no one thought we would ever get more money from the federal government. So, so that's another instance. Um, and then one more is we, um, we, we had a terrible accident. Kids died. Uh, they were at a house after graduation. Um, and someone from the clergy came to me and said, you know, the, the, the high school brushes this stuff under the rug. Um, so I got the police chiefs from all the communities served by this high school district together and their superintendents and their, you know, the people, the counselors, that deal with drugs and alcohol and kids. And out of that came something called Parent the Anti-Drug. Um, and one of the things that, that happened was we had someone come speak to us. It was a psychologist and he said, his son told him, you're wasting your time. No one's going to listen to you. He goes, well, we're going on vacation. He goes, Dad, what pants should I wear, right? And the point was, they really do listen to you. They don't, they don't make you think that, but they do. And so the idea was not to have the mayor and the police chiefs, uh, doing this sort of work. It's the parents. And that exists today, um, and it's, it's doing really well. Um, the last one I would say is, um, affordable housing. We, we've created affordable housing in Island Park through a trust and through inclusionary zoning. Um, but what you find out, and I think this is true for Leland County, is that our community cannot meet all the needs of affordable housing. It needs to be regional. You know, if someone can live in Traverse City in affordable housing and work in Leland County. And, you know, we, we just, we didn't have enough land to buy or get contributed to provide it. So now it's a regional effort and it's creating a lot of affordable housing stock in the suburbs. But, so yeah, I've been very effective at building all sorts of coalitions. Coming up with ideas. So I hope that answered your question.
Mr.?
Allgaier. So how do you reach these people? How would you get to know and listen to the staff? And I guess I'm, I'm thinking about, do you sit in your office? Do you go talk to people? Do you meet for coffee? Do you, what do you do? How do you, how do you, how do you interact with, with the people? Because that's a big.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's a great question. Um, so, you know, one thing I would say is I, I believe very strongly in the chain of command, right? And that's, so, so if someone has a problem, they need to go to their direct supervisor. Now, if it's, if it's a serious problem, or a grass or something like that, maybe you call HR, right? If they can't get it resolved there, and I'm the max level, I, I will meet with both people and try to resolve the conflict. But I, I would say the people that have to give me the most information are the, are the correct reports, right, that I have. Um, one way, uh, to really help people, um, the rank and plow, feel listened to, is, is to have regular, you know, not every week, but perhaps, you know, once, uh, a year, twice a year with their group, right, with their whole group. And, and before that, talk with the department head and say, you know, what, what, um, what are the things we're doing? Again, are we meeting our metrics and goals? And, and really try to get down to provide ideas to us. Because no one knows better than the person doing the job, right? It's not, it's very easy to come top-down, but it, you know, it's not effective because the people that are doing the job, so you want to hear from them. And I would even, you know, I'm not, I'm not, uh, because again, it's something you have to think about. But I would even, if you can in the state of Michigan, provide remuneration for good ideas that come up from the staff. You know, if you can come up with an idea that saves the money for the county or just makes it function better, you know, do something for them to incentivize it. The other thing I think also is important is hiring from within. Um, that's a great morale builder. And I think it's really important for all the department heads to have like, okay, if I was hit by a bus, who below me is to replace me? And even for the administrator. Um, you know, you want to have a succession plan. You don't want to be scrambling, uh, if I get hit by a bus. Um, you know, granted, there's certain positions where you do want to do a search. But, um, you know, I think that's important. That, that builds morale. They know that, hey, I could be, I could be the head of, uh, HR at one point. Um, that's good. But I, yeah, I think, then you have, you meet, uh, I mean, I would say an open door policy is a good thing, but it's also not. In that I don't want an employee to come in and undermine their boss, right? I mean, if their boss is a problem, it's a small, I mean, I've managed 300 people. There's about 113 here, I think. Um, it's small enough that if someone's a real problem, you're going to know it. You know, you're going to know what, you're going to be hearing about it. Um, but you have a process. You got to be fair. You know, you have a human, uh, resources and policy. So, um, yeah, I, I mean, I think that's a way to consolidate it. Meetings and then just do things that make people feel comfortable speaking up, right?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, good morning. Something in your very impressive resume, you helped advise Mayor Lightfoot's transition team.
Yeah.
Wow, how did that nightmare work?
Um, well, it's funny, I, so I was interviewing the press a, a lot about that. And then, you know, another thing I want to mention is that I will be, you should be very comfortable, to the extent that you want me to go out and speak about the county or engage the press. I mean, usually the press deals with you, but I'm very comfortable in that environment. I've been, you know, as an academic on TV, as a mayor on TV. But, um, she, uh, so I was at the University of Chicago and I ran this research center that, uh, on public finance. And we spent a lot of time studying pension liabilities in Chicago and, and the state. So they reached out to me and said, you know, could you come in and talk to us about best practices? What the city needs to do? Um, so I met up with them. And initially, I remember having an interview and, and one of the radio people said, you know, well, you know, what about, like, aren't people outraged and about the budget and pensions and things like that? And I said, well, they, they reflected it by electing her. She was a complete outsider. Um, but she was a major disappointment. So, you know, if you look forward in, in the press when she was running for reelection, they contacted me again and I said, just a major disappointment. You, you talk about a leader that divided people. She, she was it. I mean, personally, the, the last two mayors we've had are governing for one-third of the city. You can't do that. Can't do that. Um, so yeah, I, I, I tried to give them the best advice I could. Uh, they don't listen, they didn't listen to anybody. And, and you know what? She didn't get reelected.
Thank you. My question is, I, I guess it's a comment. I, your resume is impressive and my honest gut feeling is that you're too good. How, how are you going to guarantee me that you're going to be here six months, 12 months, or two weeks?
I, I'm so glad you asked that question, okay? Um, I think I said this at the beginning, this is a pinnacle, pinnacle in the meaning. This is, this is it for me, right? If I can, if I, and again, I looked at yourself, this is a great county, well-resourced, well-run. Um, if I can help improve it, I'll be really proud. Um, you know, as you all know, this place is in your blood. I mean, M22 runs through me. This is a special place. I mean that sincerely. Um, you know, I, I always come back here. I never get tired of the views. Um, so I am taking everything I've learned over my career. And I want to be able to serve a county that I really am passionate about and love. And, uh, I'm not going anywhere else. This is it. I mean, I'd like to spend the next three, six, whatever, years that it take. You know, I know the contract's for three, to make a good thing even better. And, you know, when I wake up in the morning, it's not just a job. It's about Leland County.
Thank you. Linda?
you have a very impressive resume. And I think you've, you've been in charge of a lot of things that have been, um, much larger than Leland County. So, uh, Board of Commissioners, you know, basically we are budget, policy development for county offices. Um, we have gotten involved a little bit outside of, of our mandated duties, but through, um, contracts such as, um, Housing North for, to, to, in, in others, to, to approach the situations with. Because affordable housing is not a mandated, you would know this, but from research, not, not mandated, but we have said, what can we do? Um, so we have contracts along that line where we've allowed those experts to do what they do with their expertise, et cetera. So, um, I guess I would have to ask you first, in your comments, you know, you want to make Leland County better and, and improve Leland County. Um, so in what ways are your, are your concerns that we need, that county government needs to be made better or improved upon that?
Well, when I say that, when I say that, it's based on what I've seen. Um, you, you have, you have a lot of good, uh, plans on paper. Um, I, again, it's your vision, right? Not my vision. Um, I, I'm going to give you my thoughts about what should be done. Um, I, I worked for this former government. The thought stops with you. So I, what I would say is, is I'm saying we have great plans. What I would tweak is implementation and measurement. You know, you, plans are great. Books are great to have, you know, these, but if you're not, if you're not, um, if you're not, you can't, you can't manage something if you can't measure it. And so I'm big on this performance management. That I would bring to the table. I don't know if that's being done here. I'm just, what I've read, I don't, I'm just making an assumption. Um, I did see, I did read one job description, I think, for one of the offices where they do have action plans and, and metrics. But, um, you know, the, the, I would say this, that, um, I have, I have experience in, in developing affordable housing and creating it. I looked at Peninsula, I looked at your contracts. And, you know, if I can add value with my experience, I'm going to do that. And, and your discretion though. You know, your discretion. Again, if you say to me, look, Mike, we don't want to be involved in that, I won't do it. But if I feel like you do want to be involved, if you tell me that's a big issue for you, um, I could, I could bring experience to the table, right?
So, um, yeah, and I see that you're, you, um, have a lot of experience working with state governments. Maybe not Michigan particularly, but just state governments. And sometimes that can be a very helpful thing as well. the, I guess my final question would be for you to remind me, um, just a little bit personally why you're interested in Leland County as far as staying three, six years, et cetera. Did you say you went to the school up here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, uh, I was, um, lived in Rochester, actually an unincorporated Avon Township, which is now Rochester Hills. Um, and I wasn't doing well in school there. And I have a debt of gratitude to the Leland School that really helped me tremendously. But also, you know, when you're up here for three or four years, 24/7, um, you know, you, you create, there's a bottom there, right? So I feel very connected to this place. I come up a few times a year. My brother went to NMC. Uh, he married, he met his wife there. He's a, he's a retired captain from American Airlines. He went through that program. Um, I have friends up here that went to school with him that are now retired. And my wife, my ex-wife, went to Inter, young friend, went to Interlochen. She danced with the Joffrey Ballet. Uh, my daughter went to Interlochen and she, she's a singer. So, yeah, I have, I have strong ties there. State government is really important though, knowing state government. And I do know Michigan state government. We had, I had a member of our advisory board at the university was a former treasurer here, Speaker of the House. Um, because I've been trying to market technology to governments. He, you know, I brought me into Lansing and I met with a lot of different people. When I was at Fitch Ratings, we covered all the state agencies that provided, um, you know, debt issuances, like, for example, I don't know if the county's taking advantage of this, but they do, they're called state revolving funds for clean water and drinking water. Makes loans, low-interest loans to communities like Leland County. So I kind of know my way around there. I think I could effectively, and, and also lobby, you know, if there's something for counties. So now the county associations are really effective, really good. And I, I dealt with them because we would present in front of them as rating agencies. So I feel like I, I could help you in Lansing if needed.
So, Matt, are we on time, Mr. Chairman? Are we?
Well, we have, we have, we have another half hour.
Okay. I have one more question then, because my, when I mentioned state government, um, where I, where I say that I think we could be, possibly be beneficial. Some years ago, we wanted to start a recycling program in Leland County. We wanted a recycling program, did not have the funding. So, um, what we also did not want to do is, is put it on the ballot as a millage.
Yeah.
Because, um, I, I have always tried to be an advocate for our, our farming industry and, and nothing hits farmers harder than, well, bad weather and high taxes. And, um, we want to stop seeing our farms go to, to housing whenever possible. So, uh, we came up with the idea of instead of a millage, that it would be a per household. You may have come across exactly. So we said, per household is a fair way to do it. Um, but our, actually, our planning director at the time took, took that to Lansing and got legislation so that now that is how it's done. Um, the farmers are not unduly taxed. Yeah, everybody pays the same amount. Uh, we all pay the same amount per household for it and we've got a great program.
Is it, is it on your, is it on, so your refuse collection is done privately contracted?
Way high.
The people, so is it on, is it put on that chart?
Yeah, well, we, we do, our, our recycling program is for, we can take our, like, the bins out in the parking lot here. You can take your cardboard and plastics, et cetera, glass, to the bins around different county locations. And then we do pickups. So there'll be one here at the, in the parking lot that, where you can bring mattresses or tires or, you know, at least a curb. And hazardous waste. And then for some of those things, we pay, like, we'll pay $2 a tire. But we're cleaning up the county that way. Uh, all of the tires gone. So, um, it does that. Our personal, we don't have household recycling pickup in the county. That's all privately, your refuge is all privately picked up.
Right.
But that was a success. So, so as an advocate for the farming industry, I'd like to see more per household. So if, if we got into, you know, when it's going to go on the ballot for the special So if we got into, you know, when it's going to go on the ballot for the special programming would be per household, so that, you know, it's, one mill isn't costing a farmer $2,000 where the next person, well, you know, boy, what's $40? I can pay that.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, so I, I mean, I don't want to keep beating this drum, but performance management is a way to save money, right? If you're, if you are as efficient as possible and you can measure that, you're saving money. And then what I think is a really healthy thing to do is, you know, you always review your policies. You have to pick an interval. But, you know, obviously, that could go into your budget policies, is that when possible, you know, funding sources should come, not from the millage, but looking at alternatives. I also think it's a really healthy thing to look at a couple of things. One is, you want to have someone that constantly monitors grant sources. And believe it or not, you can get technology to do that. Now with artificial intelligence, they can do that. So, you know, grants are a great way to fund something like that. But then you also have to fund it on a continuing basis, you know, grants go away. So it might be the initial investment. But you look at everything that the state enables you to do from a financial standpoint. And you have to always be aware of, like, where there is additional capacity, right? So, I mean, I was just thinking about this, a good source of funding for affordable housing is the real estate transfer tax. In many, in many places, they just put a surcharge on there to help fund affordable housing. Now, that's a hard tax for a lot of people, too. It's like an exit tax, they don't like it. So, so, you know, that would be, but, but the point is, you do an inventory of everything that you're using now, and everything that you could use, you know, that the state's enabled you to do. So you always have this portfolio where you can make choices of how to fund something, right? And, you know, that, that, to me, what you're saying is that the user's paying, right? You're going to recycle, there's a charge, and, you know, it's a positive benefit to be. Everyone, everyone gripes a lot about the cost of government, but they also always want good government. So it's at the level. And I, and I do think, you know, you always have to be aware of the taxpayer. You know, you have a lot of cash. You have a rainy, you know, I think you have a, you have a rainy day fund. Do you have 15% rainy day fund?
We have, we have budgeted very, I'm very proud, you've touched on how well we are sitting here as a county, but that has been a lot of hard work. We have, we have been very conservative in both budgeting and spending. For a number of years, we have, you know, multiple funds so that we are prepared for those things. We have, yes, so that, that, it hasn't come by accident.
Yeah. I mean, so one, one thing I would suggest in your budget policy, whether I'm here or not, is to have kind of a prioritization of any excess revenues in your, in your operating fund, you know, that if we're ever going to tap into that, you know, maybe the first thing might be emergency management, you want to hold money in case there's a, yeah, terrible weather event up here, you know, a few years ago. And, you know, one of the things we would say is, okay, if you have excess fund balance, you can't, you don't fund something that you can't sustain, right? So like, maybe you make a contribution to the pension fund because it's underfunded, or maybe you, you know, buy a piece of equipment that you've already budgeted where you're replacing it, right? So, so it's that, that sort of thing. And again, I think policies and procedures, if you have them written down and everyone buys into it, it takes a lot of the noise out of, you know, you all look towards that and say, you can still debate whether you do something, but it's kind of guide, I think it helps government.
Michael, I want to, I want to shift gears a little bit on this. You, you said in your letter of application that you consistently watch our county commission meetings. And I know you've been, been in touch with our former administrator and our finance reorganization.
Yeah.
I'd like you to speak to your views on what we've struggled with, and how you're going to help make it work if you're the one that sits in that chair to help us make it work.
Yeah.
And what observations you have about our effort to create a CFO position and complete this transition.
Well, that's, that's a great question also. You know, so how I got involved with Deb Allen is when they were looking for a finance director, I called her and said she had somebody, and they, you know, then they resigned. So I think my attitude is that everybody, you know, if you hire a finance director, HR director, and they report it to the administrator, you have, you have to support that, right? Because if it's undetermined and it's not formal, you're going to have the same problem over and over again. You're going to have people leaving. And, you know, that, that doesn't, that doesn't look good for the county. You know, as I said before, the county government here is as good as the beauty of the county. And so, you know, having that sort of noise is just, it's a distraction. So to the extent that other parties have been involved in the finances here for years, they should, they should be part of that finance committee. I mean, I would suggest an expansive finance committee. It doesn't just include members of the board, with the treasurer. Obviously, the clerk's there to take minutes, but the clerk has a lot of historical knowledge about how this county is funded. The clerk also, you know, legally has to approve everything that's paid out, you know, all the, all the budget houses are paid out. So that is why they should be part of that. And I think legally, you could, you could change that and say, well, the administrator approves that. But I, I'm not certain, but I think, you know, the way you do it is you have a big tent because, and then, and then in the, in the finance committee meeting, you have a standing agenda. And the standing agenda are things like, okay, where are we with respect to revenues versus what we projected? Where are we on expenditures based on what we projected? And then the whole committee discusses, okay, if we're short, where are we going to get the money from? Or do we have to cut things? So everyone kind of has input. And I think if people, I think where you have conflict is when people aren't talking to each other. So you have to institutionalize a way to get them at the table and feel valued. And you know what? I would say, someone that's been running the budget and finances for 40 years, if you don't listen to them, you're stupid. You know, you want, you want them in the room. So, but at the end of the day, at the end of the day, you know, you're making a commitment to have a, an administrator that also has knowledge and expertise in finance, and somebody that will make sure the finance director can implement that. And an HR director is very important because, you know, 15% of your costs are probably goods. Everything else is personnel, right? So, you know, I would say I would want your support to implement that system. But I would say, I'm not, I'm not in a conflict because it's a waste of time for government, you know? And, and, you know, the public wants to see that you're unified, that you have a plan, you have a bid. And one, one critique I would say about the county is that you don't, you don't toot your horn enough about how well you're run. For example, your audit is very well done. I don't know if you ever applied to the Government Finance Officers Association, or they have an award each year for budget, for model, for model, I'm sorry, financial statements, right? You should have that. You know, I know these, these third parties. When you do your budget, you should be communicating to the public, whether it's through a dashboard online, you know, very simply, like, this is how much we spend, this is where it comes from, I chart, and, and this is where the revenues come from, I chart, right? So, you know, transparency is really important in the sense of, if you do need resources in the future, you're able to, you know, if people see that you're spending the money wisely, and, and again, you can also publish these metrics, these KPIs. You can say, like, this is what we said, the metric, this is the standard, and here's where we are relative to the standard, maybe we exceeded. You publish that, too. It's very easy to understand. And that builds support with the public, you know, for, if you do need something, if you do need a notice. You know, they don't want a black box, they want to see what you're doing. So, but yeah, I, I think really it's, it's an idea, the idea is big tent. You know, it's a big tent because you don't, you know, it's kind of like what's going on in the Middle East, right? If you, if you hang on the past, you're not going to get anywhere.
We have about 20 more minutes or so, and who here has another question?
Yeah, I'd like to, I mean, if I can ask some questions.
Let's make sure we get, I'll be quick. So, in the implementation of a budget, how do you view the role of your department heads? And how do you view their role as being accountable for the budgets that are developed?
So, you know, the processes is, well, they're, they're very important. They're very important in that they, they, you know, provide you with what it's going to take to run or provide our service, right? Accountability, again, beating the dead horse, the accountability goes back to these KPIs, right? If they're meeting these KPIs, it means they're doing their job, right? As much as these things are good for the public to see, you know, how quickly did we get out a building permit? It's almost more important for the management to understand that. Because, again, if you're not meeting it, that suggests that maybe we should change how we're doing it, right? So that, so that's how you hold department heads accountable. And then, you know, everyone's going to ask for more than they want. I've been through 16 budget processes in government. Everyone's going to ask for more than they want. And I think it's, it's the administrator and the finance director that have to make decisions about, okay, what, what can we really do? You know, you're, part of it is, you're, you, the, the finance director should be looking at revenue forecasts. And you, and I don't know if you take advantage of this, but the state treasurer has a tool for every local government to get a forecast of their revenues, usually over three years. And there's assumptions about, you know, what if, what if there's a downfall in the economy, you know, and people aren't being tourist for, like, COVID, you know? You have to have what I would call a contingency budget. So they have to do that, too. They have to say, what, you know, what if, if we, if we're being supported by a revenue source that's driven by the economy, you know, what are you going to do, right? So, you know, they're, I'm not, it's not top-down. They provide the information, they have to justify why they need it, they have to show what, you know, how they performed relative to metrics. And then it comes to the board. You know, we, we work it out. Finance director and the, and administrator bring you a document that's balanced, you have to have a balanced budget, right? And, you know, department heads might come to you. I would instill in them to not do that, you know, to let us, let us get a consensus before we bring a budget to you. Now, the line officials that, that, you know, you have to fund, but don't really have any jurisdiction over them, you know, that's a different story. And that's, that's really why it's important to have someone that builds relationships with them. You know, as I said, when I got, when I get here, I would be meeting with them and trying to, I met with the prosecutor, he was letting in the rest of me for screening last time. But, you know, and, and we, we talked about that, and I, you know, I think that's important, too.
Yeah, I think it almost, just because the accountability part I was talking about was actually spending what they said they spent. I mean, the metrics are important, but the biggest KPI to me is, okay, I said I need $500,000, but I'm spending $690,000.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, that's, I guess, where do you view that?
Yeah.
How do you view that?
Yeah. That, well, that's this idea of an active finance committee that's meeting at least once a month. And it could be the committee of the whole, and you have these other parties on there, but, you know, you, you want to know, this is our budget, that's the plan for the year. And you're monitoring it every month. And if, you know, the, the equalization department said, hey, we're going to spend $100,000 this year, and they're trending where they're going to spend $125,000, that's when this finance committee evaluates that and then starts, you know, asks questions like, why are we? And it might be, you know, it might be a, like, a regulatory mandate you can't get around, right? And so if you have three strikes, you're out, and people are in prisons, you know, you might not have anticipated that, right? And you get a higher cost for the sheriff. So then you have to make decisions about, we don't have a choice here, so you might have to defer or cut something. You know, another, another really important reserve is the capital budget, right? If you're going to put funds in the capital budget, you want some of it to be cash because in the event that you have a downturn and a department head come in to you saying, look, I have to do this, and I'm running out of money, that's another form of reserve. You just say, we're not going to fund this project this year, wait till next year.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question. A couple of my constituents have looked at your resume and seen a lot of experience in the Chicagoland area, so a more urban versus our rural Leland County. What, what do you think I should tell them about how you're going to adapt, even though the population between Highland Park, 32,000, Leland County, not too much less than that? What's your take on how that might affect the way you've handled business in the past?
So one thing I can tell you is I started my career in Northern Trust in Chicago. And Northern Trust, you know why they did not have branch banking? They had a really strong local bank lobby. We didn't have the MVDs all over the state branches. We had the First National Bank of Lexington, and then First Chicago. Well, Northern Trust was a correspondent bank, all these little banks. And the mayor would go, you know, a small county board president would go to the bank, their local bank, and say, we need $5 million to go to jail. And they'd say, we don't have that, let's call Northern and see if they can help us. So they called the bank here in Northern and said, we need to do municipal bonds. So they'd send me down there. So I worked with a ton of small communities in Illinois on financing essential projects. The other thing I would say is, at Fitch Ratings, my first job was heightening awareness of the rating agency in the Midwest. I spent a lot of time here. I spent, I spoke at all the different organizations that represent local governments. We rated a lot of small local governments here. So, yeah, I'm very comfortable in this environment. As a matter of fact, I, I think, I would think, like, managing a big city, the impact you're having is on the margins, right? Whereas in a county this size, I'd say, small is beautiful, unique, you can really get stuff done and be proud of it. And so my goal would be to help you do that. But I, I, I've worked with counties this size, I'm really comfortable with that. I used to go on I-55 and I-80 and I-57 in Illinois. And all the meetings were at night, I mean, the small communities were at night, and you'd go sign the bond purchase contract. And I would get on the road the wrong way sometimes. I stopped to get coffee because you just didn't, it was all the same. So I spent a lot of time in small communities.
Any, any more quick, yes, please?
You mentioned grants, that you, how familiar, familiar are you? And are you comfortable managing grants, looking for grants?
Yeah.
We're really, some of us are really like, come on, there's money out there, let's bring it in.
Yeah. So, I mean, one thing I would say is, I had to manage a $2 million grant for the center that ran. You know, there's compliance, you have to report to them what you're doing. You know, as far as, I would, I would pass the finance director, certainly guiding them to, with a grant monitoring system, identifying every possible, and it's, you know, it's not just government, it's there are foundations in the state that want to help government. You know, one thing I was looking at is the Tower. Another county got a USDA grant, I don't know if you've looked at that, but they, they did grants for, like, getting, getting connectivity. So I, you know, I, I, I am aware of what's out there, but it needs, it needs a focus, it needs a focus. And so the way it would work is, you would have a policy initiative, right? And I would like it to be that, that we could respond very quickly with you, here's how we can offset the cost and apply for a grant. And then, once a grant's in, we would have a process for meeting the compliance as well. You know, again, you want to, you want to be organized to be able to do that. It shouldn't be a catch, it's It shouldn't be a catch, just catch cam. And, you know, one thing about local government that's neat is that you can, I think it was Oliver Wendell Holmes said that, that local governments are, state and local governments are laboratories of democracy. And what he meant by that is that, you know, we could look at some other county that's funding towers and find out where they get their funding from, right? So we should always be doing that.
Mr. Rourke.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You come from a very dangerous place. A murder city, I think, sometimes people call it.
You, you know what, you're going to keep me here for hours.
Well, I, I, you will, if you get the job, you will be in a place where you can influence a lot of people. And obviously, you have that ability. What's your opinion on the Second Amendment?
You know what I would say to that is, I don't see that as a county issue. I really don't. I, and you know what, when I was mayor, I had a group of people come to me and say, we want, we want you to pass a resolution about not going into Iraq. And I said, you know, we're not going to do that. This is not, this is not a, that issue's taken up by Congress and the courts. I have views, I have views on it. But if I, if I'm your administrator and I espouse those views, that's representing the county. And you might not have taken a position on that. And I, and I would really advise you not to because, you know, you're just going to alienate people for something you have no influence over. You're spending political capital on something you have no influence over. Now, you're, you know, you're all partisan, a lot of governments don't have partisan, state and local governments have, not state governments, but local governments, like where I came from, we had no party IDs. And I would get asked to go speak in front of a party and I'd say, no, I can't do that. I might, I might be a Democrat or a Republican, but what I don't want to have happen is if I appear partisan, I don't want someone that's of the other party saying, I'm not going to come and petition the government because I know he is going to not listen to me because I'm of this other party. So that, that's, that's my answer. Thank you.
Yeah.
It doesn't really answer your question.
No, it does not, sir. You didn't do it.
I can tell you, I've hunted here.
Okay, that, that helps.
My brother hunted here.
That helps a little bit.
All right. But I, yeah, I just, you know, the mayor, the mayor of Chicago passed a, he was the deciding vote on a ceasefire in Iraq or in Gaza. And it's like, it's, you know, people were like, oh, you know, so now you've got the streets of Chicago so safe, now you're getting into international affairs, right?
Yeah.
You want to joke. So, you know, that's my position. I, I, you know, I'm sorry, but that's the best I can do.
Accepted.
Melinda or Jamie, a question before we.
No, I, I know Michael had some questions for us, so I was going to go with the time for.
Yeah, so I would say, you know, I kind of do this genie question, like if each of you had three wishes for the county, you know, that you really are passionate about and want to see happen, what would they eat? You know, what, what to you is the biggest issue that needs to happen and improve the county or redressing something? I mean, I.
We need to figure out how to have affordable housing and.
I thought you were going to say broadband.
Oh, yeah, broadband. Yeah, if you have a cudgel for spectrum.
I sat in the Leelam Lodge and, and, and put this in my phone, get over here. And it took like, I had to go back inside the hotel to get, get to work. So that's an issue that we have to.
So if you've got a cudgel for spectrum, or are holding out for more money?
You know, one of the things I would say is that these, these companies make a lot of money. And, yeah, I remember reading about, this COVID highlighted a lot of this because of the education online. And someone said that, you know, there's a poor neighborhood in Cleveland, I think, and the company said, well, we don't want to donate it because we'll lose money. And it's like, you know, just put a surcharge down there that's de minimis incidental to the sale and help fund these other places. So, you know, these companies might have to step up to try to help you. I mean, I would, you know, I would look at other places that did that, that job owned them or worked out a deal with them and try to get them to accelerate things.
But, and yes, and the affordable housing.
Okay.
Economic development. We have a very large, I mean, I'm sure you already know this, senior population, but we don't have a lot of mechanisms in place to really foster, even though, you know, like with the MVDC, there's, there's plenty of opportunities. I don't feel like we're utilizing and bridging those gaps between, you know, new industry and this area in particular.
And jobs, like, yeah.
Yeah, all of it, yeah.
I mean, I know employment is a problem and that's related to affordable housing as well.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they're kind of, all of these pieces need to, to be put into place.
Yeah, I have some, I have some thoughts about both of those things.
I have two. One is that this county is amazing, but so many people struggle. And I think we need to figure out this inequality that exists in huge amounts in Lelandon County. And I think the role of local governments is to help the typical person that wants to live and work here.
Yeah.
The other thing is just to, again, say something that you said is that we are a pretty decent county with people that are trying to do their best. And I think we need to get back to that. Just let us do our jobs and have an administrator that supports us in the public to help us do just that.
Yeah. As I said before, I mean, my job first and foremost is to get this, this machine humming so that, this again is a metric, right? If you have less and less calls from your constituency with complaints, that's a measurement of need, right? If we're doing a great job, you know, for us in government, then you're going to get less calls. And if I come here and over a year you're getting more, then you need to call me on it. Why? Anybody else?
I don't disagree with what my colleagues have said, but most importantly, I want this commission to be one that does the business of the county well and provides services in a, in the right way to residents and saves it so that they can afford to do it. Before Melinda talks about our responsibility for finances, obviously, we need to be, that is, besides hiring the administrator, probably the most important thing we do.
So that's just like being good at essential services and, yeah. As I said before, I think it isn't, you do do a great job, especially financially, you're in great shape. And I, I think you should have third party, like the GOA amplifying that vacuum and then he's putting that out to the public. I mean, otherwise, you know, people can say anything about the budget, right? But you, you're running a balanced budget, I think you have a great capital improvement plan, you know, those sorts of things should be recognized. And then if they have a third party validator, like a big, I mean, maybe the organizations like the county organization here has that sort of award. I can tell you this, that the, the International City Management Association has a performance management. You know, if you implement a good system, plan with KPIs, they'll recognize that. You apply for these things, but I, I've seen a lot of the, you know, having analyzed this government, I've seen a lot of governments that are not nearly as good as you that are getting these awards. So I would start on that right away.
Any other questions for us? And you can direct it to anybody you'd like.
Well, I, you know, I, I, as I said, I, not really, I mean, I got a good sense. I mean, I, I had a sense that these were some of the problems. I mean, if you want to hear some of my thoughts on affordable housing, I can do that if you have time. If you have time.
There's another topic right now.
Yeah, we, we don't, a mini lecture on it.
He might pardon me for, for speaking while you were interrupting me. It's that, I, I'm working on this because I was a professor, so it's like, you always want to, you know, you're always in front of people. But I just want to tell you, Highland Park, we had in the 90s, all these teardowns of smaller housing stock that were affordable because the value of the land was so high. That obviously happened a year or two. And people were building these mansions. And, you know, it helped our tax base, but people were being priced out of the market. Young families that want to come back. We had a multi-generational community where the young, where some of them come back and start their family and their grandparents and uncles were there. And teachers, firefighters, people like that could not afford to come into the community. So we created a housing trust, similar like to what Peninsula does, and a land trust. And what we did is we put a surcharge on teardowns. And that funded, that, that created a fund. Then we went out and we bought an assembly of land and we would donate, not really donate the land to the developer, we, well, we would donate it to them. And, and then that takes a lot of cost out of building the homes. So they were building rental units and condominiums and things like that that were half the price of what was going on in the market. And we were, we were getting people that were teachers and things like coming back into the community, young families coming back in the community. Like Peninsula, we had a cap on appreciation. You know, you, you couldn't come in and buy a $250,000 town home and sell it for 600 at the market. So we had like a, a limit on the appreciation to keep it affordable in perpetuity. The other thing we did is was called inclusionary zoning, where we gave developers a one-for-one density bonus. So if they were going to build 100 units, they could build, like they had a 20% set aside of affordable housing. And the way they did that is they didn't do single rooms. You had to, you had to put in the same number mix of units in the market rate. So if you were going to do a three-bedroom, it could be 75% of the size of the market rate. That's how you kept it more affordable. But then they were able to build 20 more units at the market rate. So they got this density bonus. And that created a lot of housing. And then we just had some developers where we contributed land to do rental housing that was lower cost. As I said at the outset, I don't see Lelandon County solving this problem on their own. Number one, you want to protect the environment, so you're not going to build really dense. I did want to ask a question, the hospital was turned down? Is that the hospital? Is that your land?
No, that's, that's the hospital in, in Northport.
Yeah, I read about a hospital.
Yeah, that, that was part of Lunsen's operation.
Okay, so it's not.
It's been purchased.
Yeah. I mean, so, so to that point, though, is I think, I think employers have to be part of the solution. You know, if the homestead wants workers, one of the things I did is ask companies to like contribute to that fund, not just the teardown tax. Because, you know, they, they're having trouble getting workers, so they should have skin in the game to help them. I think transportation is key, like data and what, what sort of, but I think it needs to be regional. I think it needs to be Traverse City, Buella, and Lelandon County. You know, in Traverse City, you can get some density, right? And that's what happened with this housing effort, it became regional. All these communities around us joined in. Because, you know, look, I can live in Highland Park in affordable housing and drive to the, you know, hospital in the next town. The next town might not have been able to afford to give me, you know, housing there. So it's, it's got to be a regional effort, right?
Well, Michael, thank you. And thank you for coming back. We have three more interviews today. At the end of the day, we'll be having some discussion and then I know you'll hear from Chet.
Sure. Great. Well, I appreciate your time and your great questions and I'm honored to be part of the process and hope that I'm opportune to work with you. And Chet's been great, by the way, I want you to know that. He's really representing you well.
Thank you.
Could we recess until five minutes to one?
In your dreams.
We will reconvene this meeting and we have before us today Mark Justin again. Thanks for coming back, Mark. And you picked a nice day for it.
I'm beautiful out there.
We, we planned these interviews to be less formal than the first one, so each of the commissioners have some question or two or three that they want to ask you with some follow-up. At the end of that 60 minutes or so, we invite you to ask us some questions and then see if that prompts some more questions. But we'd like you to start out today by, you were here a few days ago. Since that meeting, what have you learned about Lelandon County? And what are your thoughts about the position? And what are your, what are your questions that you might have?
Sure. Yeah. Well, since I was here last, I guess it was a little over a week ago, we've been back up to visit some of the townships and look at some of the parks and things like that that are going on. And we've, we've been pretty familiar with Lelandon County as, you know, but to take a, a different look at it, I guess. The position itself seems to be crafted, in my opinion, pretty well for what the direction and the tone that board is setting for the future. I think that there's some things that need to come together and some, some buy-in to the direction of most, you know, the rest of the employees of the town. But it seems to me that it's, from what I've learned about after interviewing here and going through the position script, like it was really attractive to the county. So I look forward to learning more about that and being a part of that implementation plan and continuing to set that, that strategy in that direction for the county. It's critically important at this time, as, as the county transitions into a different model, to really have a, you know, a big hand in that matter. So I guess that's my impression of, of the position. What have I learned about Lelandon County? Just been doing a lot more reading and research, becoming more familiar with everything Lelandon has to offer. It has a lot to offer. I think that it's a, it's a county that's positioned, as I mentioned before, as kind of a trundule, nurturing that, protecting that, while continuing to develop that and grow that is, is really important for the viability of the county. And I feel that's just important, 100% aware of that and doing that. So to join in that effort and being part of that, that team would be, would be honored.
Thank you. We're going to start down there with Commissioner Lotner with the first question or two.
Sure.
Certainly. All right. Yes, welcome back.
Thank you.
Welcome back. I was going to a little bit more depth today about your experience with union negotiations.
Oh, sure.
And, you know, have you been at both sides of the table on, on that issue and how you have dealt with that?
Yeah, I've, I've been part of the union negotiations since about 19, I don't want to date myself too much, but since about 1989. In the, in the private sector that came out of the unions were very active. And the unions that we dealt with mostly during those times were the United Community Commercial Workers Union, interest unions, the AFL-CIS. All of them had contracts with various manufacturing plants and various companies within the, within the team. And as being a, a strategy leader for the brands, I was a notable part of those teams. So early on in my career, I was more of a, an analyst, you know, helping devise the strategy that we were going to deploy with the unions in negotiation, sitting in on the meetings and then debriefing with everybody to course correct and, and figure out the right negotiation tactics. As my career grew, I became more of a frontline negotiator with those unions, got to know those union reps pretty well. And ultimately became the, the lead person in terms of, you know, going into those negotiations and, and kind of fighting off the first few forays and getting to. I, I've always enjoyed it because it's a real, it's a real give and take. I, I don't give in to the histrionics very easily, so I, I understand the tactics and when they're deployed, I kind of enjoy them.
Sure.
If you, does that make any sense to you?
Yeah, makes a lot of sense to me.
In the, in the, in the county government, in Gladwin County, we had eight unions that we were working with. But the, the, the feel and the tone of working with those unions was entirely different than working with them in, in the private sector. It was much more collaborative, it was much more, dare I say, friendly. You know, the, the cards were laid on the table early. There, there wasn't a lot of subject fusion thing that was on in. There wasn't a lot of subject fusion thing that was on, and these meetings wouldn't go on for eight, 10 hours and week after week, you know? So I kind of went into those meetings with my old negotiating hat on and quickly learned that it's different at county level. The employees are invested in their belief in the union. And a lot of the issues can be resolved before you've come to the bargaining table, I think. And when you come to the table, it's, in my experience, it's been more of a, you know, let's agree on what we can agree on. And we had only a couple of them that we had to go, you know, beyond what we could handle and get an independent person in to help us settle the dispute. But even those were settled and agreed on. So I guess I gave you a long answer to a short question. I've been involved with the union for a long, long time. I really enjoyed the process. I think it's important to go in with a strategy, a management strategy, if you will, and know what kind of things you can give in order to get. But in the county, it's much different. It's much more subtle, I think, than it is in the private sector.
And how big were, how many employees did those unions represent in any case?
In the county or back in the, back in the day?
Back in the day. I was curious about it.
Oh, it could be thousands. Yeah. And when it came to the manufacturing unions, the AFL-CIO and the Teamsters, thousands of employees.
Wow.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, thank you.
How you doing, Mark?
Good, thank you. How you doing, sir?
Good, sir. You were very forthcoming last time on our initial interview, and I wanted to ask you about your interaction style with commissioners. It was obviously that you were ganged up on in Gladwin County. Was there any, obviously, any one of us would, that would have happened. We would walk away and, you know, analyze ourselves. What did we do? What could we do better?
Right.
What did you learn from that?
I learned a lot, actually. My experience in Gladwin County was probably the most negative experience I've ever had in any job that I've had. And I think that what I learned about myself is that I, I won't come off as Pollyannaish, but I trust in people having good intentions. It's just kind of a given with me. And so I act with people like everyone's got the best intentions in mind. And when I find out that their intentions are not good, and I've already kind of played my hand in terms of, here's what I think, here's where I think that we have a problem, you know, I probably in retrospect should have judged that situation a little bit differently than I did and not been, you know, I'm not the kind of person that could sit back and allow something that I didn't think was right to happen without addressing it. And the way I addressed it was in private, one-on-one.
Right.
So I thought it was handled in a way that was not threatening, but it turned out to backfire on me. So I guess what I learned was not everyone comes to their job or their life with less of intentions. Some people have agendas. And I'm not going to try to figure out people's agendas and react to them accordingly. I'm always going to kind of be the person that I am, which is, I try to be very honest and transparent all the time. And in that case, it really backfired against me. So I guess I'm a little more wary now of what people's intentions might be below the surface, which is not a thing that I really like to think about, because I like to think that we're all here for the same reason, which is to make the county better, to make it shine, and that we're all falling under the same rope. But that's not always the case.
So the bottom line, you're going to stick to your core values, right?
I will always stick to my core values. It's too late in the game for me to try to become someone different than I've been my whole life. So, yes, I will. I will always stick to my core values.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark.
Hi.
How do you see yourself interacting with department heads and elected officials and the clerk's office?
Well, you know, elected officials are all here for a reason. They have people who believe in them, put them in their seats, in their seats for specific reasons. I have a lot of respect for that. I think with elected officials, it's helping make life easier, doing what I can to be a valued asset to an elected official. With department heads, it's a little bit different. It's relationship building, it's earning their trust, and then trying to help them develop their departments to the best that they can be. They may already be there, they may not. There's always going to be room for improvement, especially when a new set of eyes looks at something. But it's more how you go about doing that that's important. You know, I'm not the kind of person that is, would ride in the town and try to, you know, immediately take control of things. I want to learn people, I want to learn what their goals are, what their strengths and weaknesses are, what the function of their department is, what their challenges and issues are. And trust is earned slowly, is earned day by day. I believe that you interview for your job every day, and it's how you carry yourself, it's the decisions that you make. It's following through on your competence and doing the decisions that you're doing. And not giving anybody any reason to distrust you is important. So my approach to department heads and elected officials is a little bit different. With elected officials, I have a lot of respect for their position, so I'm going to try to understand from their perspective what I can do to run interference or to try to make things better. With department heads, especially if I have direct responsibility for managing those departments or those people, I'm going to try to build that real trusted relationship before I try to even suggest, you know, making anything better of the thing.
Okay, thank you. Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. Finance is not one of my strengths. Luckily, members of this commission have way better questions. But I guess when I look at your resume, I do wonder how you are feeling about helping us move to a new place and possibly new software, new system, new finance department. Just wondered what your thinking is as you've had time to think about where we're at, where we want to go, kind of how you're going to tackle that for us.
Well, I think the finance side of this job is the real blocking and tackling side of this. It's the part of the job that's more black and white and more concrete, requires more of a hard skills and knowledge to be able to set the course and get it done right. So it's an exciting time because you're not necessarily adapting to the way things have always been done. You're coming in somewhat as a change agent, which I've done a lot of in my career. But it's really examining where you've been in the past, where you want to get to in the future, and building that bridge to get there. You know, new software, new departments, new positions, all require a lot of finesse to get them correctly. The risk of doing it incorrectly is very high, especially when it comes to people. So identifying the roles, clearly laying out their duties, responsibilities, who's going to be doing what and why, and why it makes sense, getting buy-in from the parts of the county who have been doing those roles and making sure that they're on board and moving forward with the wave is important. And that, there's going to be stops and starts in that. There's going to be conflict. There's going to be people who don't think that it's the right thing to do, and they may not be overt about that, but you can see it through their actions and kind of the way they're participating in the process. So building consensus, building collaboration with people, making sure that everyone's at point B before you move to point C is going to be critically important. So it's not a switch that can be turned on, it's not something that can happen too quickly. It'll happen at some pace, but to have the responsibility to guide that process is very motivating and energizing for me. I look at it as a big challenge and something that, once it gets done correctly and we're there, I think everyone starts to see the value in it. But having that vision upfront and being able to stick to it as you have to do through it is the difficult part of it. And getting the buy-in from people along the way, because, you know, people are funny. I mean, they believe in doing things a certain way, and any time the winds of change come and people have to move a little bit left or right, people can get a little uncomfortable. And that's, either motivates you or it makes you run away. To me, it's motivating. I think it's the supreme challenge on that kind of blocking and tackling department's position.
Do you think you have the skills and finance to help lead that change?
I believe I do, yeah. I mean, I've managed the financial side of a lot of businesses in my life and government accounting and the responsibility. I mean, there's a very rigid set of standards for government accounting where you can't bluff through a problem. So that makes it a lot easier. It's more how you go about implementing it within your own organization that makes it unique to this county. And that's, yeah, I believe that I have the background and skills to do that. I mean, I'm confident in myself.
Good. Okay.
So thanks for being here again, Mark.
Sure, thank you.
What role do you see department heads have in developing a budget? What role do you see them have in being responsible for implementing that budget in a fiscally sound manner?
I think their role is critically important in both. In the budget development process, you know, the way that the budgets flow is from the bottom up. And no one knows better than that department head on what they're going to need to run the department for the next year. And having each department head be responsible to put together their own budget, ultimately it's the, you know, it's the board, the administrator who are going to have to troubleshoot and decide what gets approved and what doesn't. And there are always challenges to, every budget does happen in a lot of the meetings that you've got to, the budget that you've put together. But I think the department heads have to own their own budgets, and they have to be 100% responsible for making sure that if their budget is going to, if it's going to be at risk, if there's line items on the budget, they're going to be at risk, that they're anticipating that, coming through the proper channels, getting the amendments made so that there are no surprises. I look at that as the department head's role in both ways. I mean, we're going to be looking at budgets too and asking questions back. It's like, hey, you're, you know, lying whatever on your budget, looks like it's getting close to the end, what's going on? But it's really the department head's responsibility to own that budget and to be responsible for it. We react to it. Budgets are, as you all know, are living, breathing, creative things. And I don't think anyone's ever written a budget that never changed throughout the year. So what it's anticipating to change is being mindful about them and making sure the proper channels are followed to address them, and that's the department head's responsibility.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Thanks for coming back.
Yeah, it's great to be here.
Yeah, it's good to have you. I have always been a big advocate for having a grant writer come on board. And I'm wondering where you kind of sit, what your past is with grant writing and possibly enabling other staff members or even hiring a grant writer to come into Leonard County?
Yeah.
Just kind of your thoughts and ideas about that.
Well, grant writing was something that was pretty new to me when I came into county administration. And in the interview process in Gladwin County, it was evident to me that it was important. And I guess I knew that it was important to me. So one of the first things that I did at my own expense was went through a grant writing course through the American Grant Writers Association's accredited grant writing course. I went through their course, got their certification, and kind of learned the basics. I mean, all you're going to learn in a course like that is the basics. Until you start actually working on grants and get that experience, all you have is academic knowledge, which has some value to it, but not as much as doing it. So getting into some of the specific grants and subscribing to some of the grant sources and talking with some of the granters out there, really started to get a feel for some of the requirements of these grants. And I really pushed the department heads in Gladwin to search for their own grant opportunities as well and bring them weekly, instituted regular grant meetings where we'd all sit down and talk about, what have you seen? How can it help? A lot of grants are double-edged swords. They require a match, and you have to have the funding to be able to do that, or you have to have other resources that you may not have in order to qualify for the grant. So there's a fiscal part of that as well. And then you have to be very careful not to commit resources to a grant-funded opportunity that once the grant dollars go away, it has stuck with, you know, more expense than they had before. So there's all these factors to consider. On any larger grants that are very complicated, for example, housing grants, things like that, I believe it's important to employ grant writers who do this every day and know the ins and outs of the grants, because you can get lost in them. Some of those grant applications are, you know, just big. And, you know, it's a profession in and of itself. So at the county employee level, I think we can handle the USDA grants, the Michigan State Police grants, the DNR grants, local foundations, things like that, who have grant funds available. But when it comes to the larger grant wars, you know, when it comes to HUD, when it comes to FEMA, when it comes to some of these, I think it's important to get some expertise in there, because you're going to get one shot to get that grant application right. And if you goof it up, you're not going to qualify. So I think there's a line that gets drawn between what we can handle as county in terms of grants and what we have to look at in terms of getting help to.
Good one, sir.
Mark, again, thanks for being here. You talked some the other day about your keeping board members informed.
Yeah.
And also on our list was a possible topic we might want to cover is interaction with board members and relationships with board members.
Right.
Building on your experience at Gladwin.
Yeah.
How would you keep us informed? And how would you make sure that you had a good relationship with seven commissioners?
Right.
And if you could do it over again, would you do something differently in Gladwin?
What I learned was that every, we have five commissioners in Gladwin. All of them had different preferences when it came to how they liked to be communicated with. We had one guy who was in his late 70s, and he either was in person or on the phone. He didn't text, he didn't email, he didn't, I mean, you had to talk to him. So I would call him almost daily sometimes just to check in. The rest of them were more savvy when it came to communicating with each other technologically. We use SharePoint, we use text, things like that. I'm not a big advocate of using text on a personal phone for county business. All of that stuff is foil-upable. And I think that you get into a little bit of a rut because it's really convenient to just get up your phone and send a quick text. But if that's the way someone likes to communicate, that's what we should do. But you can put a separate line on your phone at a very minimal cost and just use that for county business, which is what I did in Gladwin. So I had a separate, same phone, but just two lines on it. And then all of my text communication was on numbers, so whoever was a employee or subpoena or whatever, it wasn't that you called, you'd usually text with my kids and do all that stuff. So learning each commissioner's communication style is important for me. How do you, what's the most effective way to communicate with you? And then I tend to over-communicate upfront and let you all tell me, okay, you don't need to always tell me about that, or, you know, I can definitely, so I see you next time. That way I can get a feel for what kind of information you want and not, you know, if anything's urgent, if there's a concern that's a crisis, of course, I'm going to reach out to you immediately and do whatever we need to do to gather around it. But on a day-to-day basis, it's learning each person's style and then adapting to that and then kind of tapering it as time goes on as to what kind of things you want to know about and what kind of things to do.
Commissioner Lotner.
Yes, again. You were talking about grant writing and et cetera, having your... You were talking about grant writing and et cetera, having your department heads look for opportunities, et cetera. Have you yourself written, I see that you're a certified grant writer, have you yourself written some of those grants?
Yeah, I sure have. I wrote probably, probably in my time in Gladwin, probably 13 to 15 of the first grants.
Oh, wow.
And we didn't get all of them. Some of them are still out there in terms of going for them. But again, some of the easier ones don't take very long. You know, if you're applying with MMRA or a grant, I mean, I don't even know whether it counts. It's a one-page document, it can fill out and give it stuff. So if you take those away and look at just grant opportunities from people, foundations and things, I wrote probably 15 of them while I was in Gladwin.
Oh, okay.
And then we did outsource a couple of them, because they were just too...
And who did you outsource to?
There are various different individuals, and then small companies who specialize in grant writing. We're fortunate in Gladwin, right in our county, they have a lady who does that for a living, it's her profession. And she's always looking for opportunities. So she's, you know, very frequently stopping by and bringing opportunities to say, hey, look at those kinds of things. So she's the one that I used to write the bigger grants. And I think she's very thorough and very good.
Did you ever use grad students? Did you end up, okay, sorry.
I should take that back a little bit. When we first started on the opioid training, I worked closely with MSU and their grad students.
Okay.
They put a group together of about five grad students and assigned them to, well, I'm sure it wasn't just to me, I'm sure it was others as well. But I had access to those five grad students all the time, and that was during the early stages of when the opioid settlements were starting to happen.
Sure.
And we were filling out a lot of different paperwork and things. And they did help with a lot of that application process. But that was kind of a structured thing.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
What's your knowledge of the MERS retirement system?
It's what we have in Gladwin, and it's, you know, it's what we use. Gladwin's position on their, on the funding of their pension plan, there is some liability there that hangs out there and kind of troubles the financials. So I made a big push with MERS and got their actuaries involved, because I wanted to go away from the defined benefit program into a defined contribution program with the county. And so that requires a lot of feasibility studies and analysis. So I used MERS for that, and got their actuaries involved. And it actually made a recommendation with the board to make that switch. I think they were taking it up. But in terms of how MERS works and, you know, being actively involved with them, I mean, I was as involved with them as I had to be. Especially with an open liability like we had, we were looking for a lot of ways to keep it from growing, if you will, just to try to get our hands around it a little bit.
So what's your opinion on having an employee buy personal time to retire early?
I'm generally opposed to that. Unless, every case has to be considered on an individual basis, especially if the employee's in a hardship situation, where there's an illness or something like that, that has to be taken into consideration. We did actually have one employee that we recommended that we have before, because he was on the original MERS plan and he was costing the county a fortune. And he was one that came to us and said, well, let me buy it out and retire. It was a threat. And the board did allow him to buy out his plan and retire, which reduced our annual liability by 115 grand a year. So that was helpful. But for those, I'm opposed to that unless there's a very specific reason. But I'm not the judge on that. I mean, if an employee comes forward and asks to do that, that's something that's going to come to the board for this reason.
Good answer. Thank you.
So what do you imagine your three, six, and 12-month goals would be if you came here?
I think for the first three months, it's going to be associate things to faces, start to figure out how the departments are functioning, you know, just to kind of circulate around, get to know people, take the reins on what it is that's important to the board upfront, and then use that time to start to build relationships with the board and with the elected officials, seeing if there's hard hats. By the time we hit the six-month mark, I would hope that there was a little bit more comfort with me as the administrator, that people are starting to learn me a little bit as well. And at the end of the year, I would think that we would have our plans and our strategies moving forward, as far as, you know, the transitions that we're doing, things like that. There's never going to be a time where everything is running smoothly, I don't think. I don't think it's the nature of the beast. But riding those waves up and down and earning that trust in the first year with people, I think is probably job number one, you know, getting myself established as the administrator and having people acknowledge that and start to build those relationships.
Okay, thank you. So on your interview journey, since you were last with us two months ago, two weeks ago, I just wondered if you'd identified any issues that are current in Leona County and that you're excited about working with this board with to help us tackle together?
Well, yeah, I mean, as far as issues go, from what I've learned, you know, the transition into the new financial model is probably one of the biggest challenges of coming in here. And I strongly believe that even this county's board needs a really multifaceted diagram on that to be able to get that done correctly. The more I think about that and all the skills required to assimilate into that role and get everybody moving in the same direction, it's really important to pick the person to that. So I would say that that's probably from what I can see upfront, one of the biggest challenges. I know that there are other challenges in this county that almost all counties have, such things as economic development, affordable housing, addressing the, you know, the opioid crisis ongoing. Keeping the economic engine reviving in Leona County is really important, that all the dollars flow into this county due to where it's situated and the natural beauty and how the county is run. So I think caretaking that, nurturing that, you know, keeping that moving forward is critically important as well. So that's what I would say would be top of mind coming in the door. Building relationships, understanding where the issues are within departments, helping to get people to understand the bigger vision that the county has, and not only that there's change in thought about people and why, you know, defining where the end space is so that people can have time to get comfortable with where we're going and why. It's something that would be top of mind as well. So that circles back to that, building relationships and earning trust with people.
Thank you.
Can you tell us a little bit about your experience in the management of capital contracts, contract administration, all the various facets of a capital project?
Yep. And throughout my career, been involved in a lot of that as well, a lot of major capital investments, a lot of investment, corporate investment behind equipment, technology, even commodities. I was very active in the futures world for a long time, getting companies like Conagra and Terreli, companies like that, to buy long-term contracts on commodities in order to, you know, make a more predictable profit going forward. So in the county government side, you know, I've written, I think I wrote about six RFPs in Gladwin, all of them were pretty involved in capital projects, soliciting bids from people, you know, having the bids open, the commissioner's meeting's going through them. The purchasing policy is pretty rigid, and, you know, if you follow the policy and write a good RFP, you're going to get good bids. And if you network the right way to solicit the bids, you're going to get bids from the right people, if you will. In Gladwin County, we had the misfortune of four dams failing a couple of years ago. And there's a massive rebuilding project going on, and there's a delegated authority that's been appointed to head up that effort. So in working with them and getting a lot of this, a lot of the big capital projects approved and vendors appointed to do the rebuilding, now all that's going on over right now because of the lawsuit that's going to stop in construction. But, you know, we're talking on that project, you know, $350 million worth of contracts that have been awarded to various construction companies, but the county, and I personally have been very involved in soliciting bids and managing contracts. So again, I think that's something that, it's more of the black and white part of the job, the blocking and tackling part of the job, if you will, but it's something that has to be done obviously correctly to be in compliance with county government laws and state department laws.
Thank you.
Okay, you have any?
Commissioner Lutner, back to you.
Well, what haven't we covered? Well, we've covered negotiations and grant writing and finances and employees.
I have one I'd like to ask if I could. We've talked about relationships with board members, and you covered that last week. But think about the clerk, the sheriff, prosecutor, the judge, the department heads. And if we were to go to Gladwin and ask them to describe you, how would they describe you?
I think that the sheriff, prosecutor, and all the judges would tell you that they had a name number one relationship with me, that I was a big asset to all of them. The registered deeds would tell you the same thing. I think the clerk would tell you the same thing. The treasurer and I, you know, she was very entrenched in what she was doing, and Sandy is the first administrator on site that's being, I don't know, I never did quite figure out, somewhat of a threat maybe, because a lot of the function that was coming with the administration office was coming out of hers. And so, you know, and she didn't believe the county meetings, she thought it was a waste of money, a waste of county money. So, you know, I'm not sure what she would tell you. I think she would tell you that I was, I did help her manage those right UHR issues that she was having. But in terms of, you know, what she would tell you about me, I think she would tell you that I'm a really smart person, really good person, but that we didn't meet. So, but I think all the rest of them would tell you that I was a huge asset to them and built relationships with them and understood, built an understanding of how I could add value to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you to be just a little bit more specific. This question goes back to the transition of the finance department and the accounting systems. And so I'd like you to tell us what you would perceive in a more specific sense as the biggest challenges in that transition and how you plan to address those challenges.
Understanding where the county is currently, it would be job number one. Here's how we're currently doing things. What has been the impetus to change? What are the reasons that the board feels that we need to move to something different? It would be important for me to understand better upfront. And then when it comes to devising an implementation plan, once I have an understanding of where we're at, where we're going and why, a lot of choices need to get made along the way prior to implementation. And then implementation is a project management function. It's, you know, A, S, B, N, C, or D. That would be my approach. Right now, you know, what I, the knowledge that I have comes out of the last couple of audit reports that I've read through and kind of, you know, what I've read in minutes and things like that. So I wouldn't say I have a crystal clear understanding at this point of where the county's at now and what the real impetus for change is. I mean, I think I may be too little or no. But in order to answer that question accurately, I would have to have more concrete information. But my approach would be very systematic. It would be very getting the knowledge on both ends, putting together an implementation plan, and then executing it. And as I mentioned earlier, the, I think the variable in that is timing. How quickly can you move forward? How quickly can you move from A to B to C, with getting everybody on board, getting the right software in place, getting everyone trained, making sure that there's an understanding and that we're meeting the financial reporting requirements before we can move on to the next step and the next step to get to where we're going. So I have a lot of patience with processes like that. I would want to understand completely what the accounting software system was so that I could teach it to people and be a resource for people. I'm not a person that's going to say, okay, we'll remove the system, go learn it, how we learn it first, or learn it in person with everyone.
Thank you.
Did you think of one, Commissioner Lutner?
No, nothing further.
Anything else, or shall we, yes?
Well, I want to give them a break for a minute. Very good answers, and thank you for your time. Your interest is woodworking. It takes a lot of patience and skill to do it. I do not have it. Can you tell me about your woodworking experience?
Yeah, woodworking has always been kind of a mental escape for me. I do two things. I write crossword puzzles, get all of them to get published, and then I do woodworking. And my woodworking, right now I'm learning the art of loop theory, because I have two kids who are musicians. Before I die, I want to build them both very fine guitars.
Okay.
So in order to move to that, you have to build a lot of skills in woodworking to be able to do that. So I build right now a lot of furniture, a lot of, really, I just built a beautiful curio cabinet, for example, that, you know, was, I didn't even want to give it away, but I did. I build puzzle boxes, which are very intricate. They're little mechanisms that you have to do certain things to get other things to happen, and there's a lot of really fine machining and things that need to be done in there. But I have infinite patience for that kind of stuff, and the satisfaction in putting it together and having it work is very rewarding for me. I have power tools, but a lot of that is done in P and tools, a lot of rasp and chisels and sanding and very fine detail work. And it's going to be the same as I move farther down the path into learning how to build musical instruments. So that's my, those are kind of my passion in woodworking right now. I'm done building tables and chairs. Those became kind of, I don't know, almost like assembly line projects for me. I like to do things that are more intricate and more crafted.
Thank you.
I thought you were going to mention motorcycles.
What's that?
He was a motorcycle guy. I thought he was going to mention motorcycles.
You tell I broke my ankle last year, okay?
Oh, you...
We're not going there.
I haven't broken any bones. I haven't broken any bones on motorcycles since I got out there, like, 40 years ago.
Well, Mark, now it's your turn to...
I thought of something.
Oh, yes.
Just to make sure that there's no, I have no questions about this. Your early career, there was a lot of moving.
Yes.
Like, being at a job for a year or two and leaving, and...
That's normal.
Lots of leaving, isn't it?
It's way more normal.
It's way more. spoken from someone in that, yes, okay. So, maybe I don't need to ask it. I mean, I wouldn't.
Well, it was really the nature of the industry that I was in. There were a lot of mergers, a lot of acquisitions, a lot of changes in management in all these companies, and...
I get that.
You know, I had, during that time, my, my kids were in school. I mean, and to pick them up and move to a different city was always a huge decision for my wife and my mate. So, every one of those moves were intentional, and they were done for specific reasons. But everyone that was in that industry would be, at the same time, their resume would look the same.
You know what? Actually, I totally get that. I have a daughter who had the same experience. Thanks for reminding me. Okay. She'd find a company and they'd sell it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark, you seem real even keeled and very easy to talk to, and you speak, and you communicate very effectively. But as you, as you were, let's say you're walking around our county building, and then across the street at the enforcement center, what would people, what would people's first impression of you be? Or what, what, I guess, I'm trying to, I'm trying to grasp onto something.
Yeah. Well, I'm the kind of person that, and I don't want you to see this wrongly, I'm never going to impress people on the way, the way I appear. I mean, you have to, you have to actually talk to me to understand me. I'm a very caring and nurturing people, and I am very even keeled. You can't ride on me if you try.
I sense that.
Rookie, challenge. That's a challenge, sir.
Don't show...
I have a unique ability to release stress levels with people and to calm people down. People that get to know me say, I need some more time. I just, I need five minutes with you. And then, okay, so in fact, that's the kind of person I am, the effect that I have on people. I've always thought, in the back of my mind, I guess, that people, people are always going to judge you in certain ways, and I've never really, really cared about that very much, because I think that, I've always believed in the fact, it goes back to one of the first questions we had today, in that I believe in the inherent good in people, and I'm going to find it in you, no matter how much you want to hide it from me. I'm going to find it at some point, and you'll eventually learn to trust that. But a lot of people don't. A lot of people assume just the opposite, that you, that you have bad intentions, or that you're here to, you're out to get me, or whatever like that. So, as I'm walking around, I will say hello to people, I will talk to people, I'll ask them some questions, and people will form their opinions over time. You know, I'm, I'm the kind of person that you kind of have to get to know me a little bit to, to really get me. But I am very much who you see right now. I never change. I don't change in social situations or business. I'm always the same person wherever you encounter me. It's just easier that way, so.
Now is it Mark's turn?
Yes, I'm done. Sure.
Any questions for us, Mark?
Well, yeah, I, I understand that there's, through talking to a few people around, that they're, this county is no different. I mean, my vision of the county is just this shining gem of a county, right? And that's why we come here so much, that's why we spend money here, that's why we want to spend our lives here. But like everywhere else, we get very much below the surface of it. I know, I know there are issues. I know that there are conflicts. I know that there are, there's help that's needed, there's guidance that's needed. So, I guess one of the questions that I would have, without putting anybody on the spot or identifying the specific, is what, what would your expectations be of the administrator coming in with the, you've asked me what I would do, but what are your expectations of the administrator, whoever that ends up being? How they're going to start to interact with the elected officials, and the departments, particularly those where you know, through your own experience, that there is going to be resistance, there's going to be conflict?
I'm not sure if I can answer. I, I again, I would hope that, I mean, you kind of outline, you outlined, your first three months would just be learning and adapting, and I think that would be strategically probably the best way that you could approach everyone and kind of find out the dynamics from, from behind, you know, and, and really soaking that up. And then also, learning yourself those dynamics, and potentially bringing to the board some sort of strategic, either outline, or having some outside person come and, and really figure out how we, where, where, where the bumps in the road are, and like, like basically how these people are interacting, and, and why it functions the way it does. And, yeah, I think, I think the main thing, and, I mean, if I'm just going to be totally transparent, I, I love your soft skills, and I think that is something that this county really, really needs, because there are longstanding issues, because a lot of people choose, once they have a position here, they do love it so much, they stay for a really long time. And that's a brilliant thing, but then it also leads to long-term conflicts. And when you have those long-term conflicts, just like in a marriage or any sort of relationship, they're more difficult to unwind. And that's what we have. We have longstanding conflict that are, that are, that are difficult to, to really kind of pull the strings apart, and we need someone who's going to be patient enough and cares enough, who wants to do that. And so, that is something that I would really like to see moving forward. So, I hope that answers your question.
That's, that's, that's good, because part of the concern would be that, you know, in the first three months, you're going to have people come that is and now understand because of just that, and, I mean, he committed to this, you know, and all that. For you to have the trust that, that there is, there's a method to the madness, you know, I know that with certain people, you have to take a few steps back before you can take one forward. And the goal is always to start taking steps forward, even though you're getting knocked back occasionally by people.
Yeah.
And as long as the board has an understanding of that and patience with that, I think that's, that's really important to me, because you, you could count on me keeping you informed on all of that stuff along the way, so you should never get surprised by anybody. But conflict is, especially when you're an outsider coming into an established organization, conflict is, is just, it's going, it's going to be there. It's more how we manage to work through it that defines who we are as a person longer term, how successful we want to be.
Yeah.
You know, if you're reactive and bounce off people, and try to be authoritative with people too early, that's never going to work in an established organization. So, and I just, I wanted to, I wanted to, and I think I renewed the answer, I just wanted to hear that from you, that you kind of got that, and you understood that, because whoever your next administrator is, that first year is going to be stressful for that person. Because it, everyone who's interviewing through this right now wants to be successful, you know? And you know you're being judged, like I said earlier, you're interviewing for your job every day, you know, especially when you're new at some time. So, it's the decisions that you make and how you carry yourself that defines you longer term, and, and shows your quality as a professional, as a good manager, so.
Well, I, not to interject, but I feel like, you know, like, I feel like a certain type of person would consider, you know, accomplishing tasks right away as a certain metric of success. Where, I think, I think success here is working on the long term, pulling back in order to move forward.
Right.
Like, that's what we desperately need, because if you have to understand the inner workings and how it all functions together, and, you know, step out of it, obviously is a leadership role, but then be able to, be able to bring those components back together and then move forward.
Yeah.
Is kind of who I see it working.
Yeah, and that's, that's a big challenge, and you have to worry about that. I mean, that, that has to be what, what interview has to do, the minute you look up in the morning, is, is that.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because the, the hard skills of the job are always going to be there. It's more that, the softer side of it is going to define your insert going forward.
Yeah.
So, anybody else want to take on his question?
I, I guess I, I agree with Commissioner Kramer, but I am big on planning. I'm big on setting goals. And I think as, you know, you orient, as a new person would orient themselves, you know, I just really have to rely on processes and really keeping everybody informed, but there is progress towards our goal.
Yeah.
So, as, as much as I agree with stepping back and taking it slow and methodically, you know, I think we owe it to our constituents to...
Yeah.
To have some results, so.
There are a lot of eyes watching what goes on in this room, in this, in this building, in the community. So, yeah, and facing those people and keeping them informed, that, if they're in trouble, people want to be confident in their leadership.
Anything else?
That was, coming in, one of the things that I was hoping to address with you was, was what was your, how are you going to be looking at the administrator as they struggle through some of that, the conflict that is inevitable coming in? So, and I agree with you, having a strategy, having goals set, having waypoints set, and they can adjust it along the way because there are setbacks, but for the most part, you got, you got to keep it moving forward, so. So, that was, that was the main burning question. I mean, I'm, like I said before, I'm, I'm committed to working in this another eight, 10 years, and I hope at the end of these 10 years that all that is seated, the tone, the direction is set, and I'm sure some of you will still be sitting in your seats at that time as well, so.
Want to thank you for coming and for back. We're going to have two more interviews today, and then we're going to have some discussion about next steps. And we'll, we'll be, we'll chat on that, and he will, he will keep you posted.
Okay, sounds great to me. Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for coming in. So good to see you again.
Maybe recess for a minute, please?
I want to know where you camp.
Where did, where did we camp?
Yeah.
We camped by river.
Oh, that's great.
I'm starting to understand you.
The research is, are we thinking of here? It's beautiful. Have you been down there?
No, I haven't. Welcome to the dog side.
Thank you so much.
Well, we are back. Everybody's here. Thank you, Tracy, for coming. And Commissioner Kramer needs to leave early today, so when you see her walk out at 3:00, it's...
It's not you.
So, we're here for, and we're going to spend an hour, hour and 10 minutes with you to get to know you better. We welcome you back. We do want to start out tonight by, or today, it feels like tonight.
It feels like tonight.
What have you thought about, since interviewing last time, what homework have you done about our county, and what, what thoughts do you have about why this job fits for you?
I think, I have been reading through the minutes, and some, we all see some things that the board wants to change, and bring us to changes to the administration. I was reading through the audit, and noticed some recommendations that they offered up, and I have some, some things that I wanted to talk about that further. I don't know if you want me to do that this time.
We will, we have a chance at the end of our interview for you to ask us anything you want to ask or tell us anything. Okay.
So, yeah, I just wanted you to know that I had read through some of the minutes, and had a few questions about some things in there, and with regards to the audit, it looks like you're making some, some changes to the administration with the finance and HR and accounts payable, so, yeah.
Well, we have a number of questions, and we're going to start, this time, are we...
Do we do here?
Yes, right here.
Yes.
And we all have some questions, and we want it really to be dialogue, not just one-way communication. So, feel free to expand. Commissioners will feel free to do a follow-up question. Okay? Commissioner Kramer?
Thanks for coming down.
Hi.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you're here. I'm really curious, just to start off, because I'm really, I kind of want to know how you envision your three, six, and then 12 month, kind of like your timeline in your mind, knowing that it would look nothing like that, because that's how it is. But just kind of how you plan on, because I feel like an entrance into work culture is, it'll, it'll say a lot about your leadership style and how you kind of envision walking into this new role. So, could you kind of walk us through on how you kind of see that looking right now?
That's one of the questions that I had for all of you. So, stepping into this role, because it's, it's new, I've been reading through, and your processes is different from what I'm used to. From going from Claire to Oceana, it was a little bit different, so here I'm noticing it's quite a bit more different than what Oceana is. So, I would say getting up to speed with the employees in the department, getting to know what their practices are, and with all the other departments as well, and seeing where you are with, I mean, later on, that would be the first three months, then getting into six months, you're having to look at a lot of, like, right now, we're dealing with materials management, we're dealing with opioid settlements, and what we're doing with those funds, and those types of things. And those may be questions that happen within the first three months, but follow up in the next, in the next three months, so that you can keep those moving forward. It's, it's just going to be a matter of getting up to speed with how your process works. I am currently used to doing, with the work commissures, they have a committee of the whole. We have two meetings a month. Maybe the whole is first, starts at 10 o'clock. We have our board commissioners along at 3:00, and we're usually done by 1:00. And those are your meetings are quite long, and...
We've noticed the same.
Quite, quite long, but you have the executive board meeting, and then you have the board of commissioners meeting. Can you tell me what the difference is between the two? Because you're doing motions at both.
Yeah, well, our, our, what we call the executive is basically the committee of the whole. So, we meet the second Tuesday and look over all of the potential action for that month, and then we ratify it the next Tuesday.
All right.
Or don't ratify it, or, yeah. Yeah. So, it gives us a week in between making recommendations that we think we're going to implement, it gives us a week to... It gives us a week to think about it, study it, talk to our constituents, et cetera. You know, maybe tweak it if we need to, or eliminate it altogether the next week.
I have an acting background. I just like to think of it as a dress rehearsal.
Perfect.
Or the show.
Perfect.
But it's also our fact-finding. So, we try to discuss things thoroughly there and get as much information as we need so that then we can ratify or not ratify fairly quickly at the public meeting.
Other structures might call it a work session.
Okay.
There's no actual actions that can be taken. We recommend actions for the next board meeting, but that's why I look at it as a work session.
Yeah, but we have to kind of find out where we're all coming from.
Kind of a meeting of the minds, yeah.
If we need to know any more information.
Did you have a follow-up question?
Well, I'm just talking.
Just trying to be kind. Mr. Resher was all, yeah. So, you know, obviously, if you've read some, you know, the job description and what we're doing, the creation of the new finance department, and some of the reading and recommendations, transitioning to a new accounting system and pulling this kind of forward into the more modern world. With that in mind, can you tell us what you would see as the largest challenges, greatest challenges in implementing that, creating a new department, implementing new software? And how would you tackle those challenges?
Well, I can tell you that new software, I've been through that a couple of times. We're actually working through that again at Oceana. I started out with their software in Clare County, and then moved to BSNA. And we also implemented a timesheet module that came with BSNA. Works out very well. Employees can put their information into the timesheet system. Those timesheets go to the department heads, elected officials, they make their, they approve those, and then they go right into the system rather than having the employees implement or input all of that information. So, the process is not new to me. Implementation has worked pretty smoothly, depending on what software you're going to if you're moving from Harris to BSNA. And they work with you, they do all the trainings, and they get the processes moving quickly.
You were directly involved in both those, in sort of implementing that? That was part of your job duties?
Yeah. And the one that we're working on with Oceana right now is cloud-based. So, we already have BSNA. It's moving from in-house cloud-based, so that, but there's going to be a little bit of change with the way that they operate that because it's, the software looks a little bit different. So, we're working the trainings and things like that through the company right now.
Thank you.
Tracy, your experience at Claire and Oceana County is very impressive, and I agree that many people have expressed to me that, you know, you seem like a natural fit, you know, to move to Leyton County. My question to you, though, is what really excites you about coming here? Is there a challenge or an issue or something about Leyton County, the government, not the physical beauty, but that you really see as a good match for your skills where you're at right now, and why you really want to come here?
First of all, the size of the county is about where I've been. And this will be the second time that we've actually, that I've actually had the opportunity to build a department with the help of the Board of Commissioners, of course, the finance department and having HR and finance all under one, because Oceana wasn't quite there yet, or not there. And so, and we have all new employees in that department since I started working there. There had been some people that had been there for a long time, some that had, one that had actually applied for the county administrator's job, didn't get it, and wasn't comfortable staying there. So, we have all new staff in there within the last year and a half, I believe. The one that worked in the clerk's office, but she moved down, she's doing payroll in there. So, to me, it is somewhat of a challenge because you're building something new, but it's all a matter of working together and making the process move most smoothly. I just, I really like that a lot. Leyton is beautiful, it is gorgeous here. And like I said, my husband is doing more and more business up in the Traverse City area and up this way in the sales, and his boss says, "Don't let me get that job up there so that you guys can..." Because they're building a, they just have a company take over their business, and they are actually going to be purchasing a warehouse up in the Traverse City area, so I'll be here long.
Thank you. I guess it's my turn. So, talk about the way you interact with department heads and elected officials. That's always a balancing act because you're supervising some people, but then you just need to be able to work as a team with others. How do you do that? What's your approach?
So, I think that keeping the department head's elected officials apprised of what's happening, there might be things that are happening at the board level, things that they need to, we need to share with them. I'm reluctant to say this because I read something in the minutes about something to do with a meeting that had happened with some elected officials. But in both counties that I've worked for, we have a department head meeting. The, at Claire, it was once a month, and the county administrator held that meeting. It was just a, it was just a meeting to allow us to talk about the different things that were going on within the county, and give the departments an opportunity to talk about the things that's going on in their departments as well, just allowing them to share those things. When I moved to Oceana, they were have, they are having them, they're quarterly, but they are run by the personnel chair, who is a member of the Board of Commissioners, and I am there to provide additional information. So, I think those meetings are important, but I also find myself, if there's a question in regards to something that has to do with the clerk's office, walking down and having a conversation, just keeping those lines of communication open and being able to talk about those things when they're asked.
So, what kinds of, so is that the kind of interaction you will have with department heads and, what, sitting in your office with an open door, walking down the hall, what?
I, my door is always open now. Anybody who's open to talk to me whenever they need to, pick up the phone, give me a call, if they need to talk to me about something. But I don't, I don't have issues with someone's office and talking to them about something that's happening or a question I might have. If they have an issue with that, then I can do it via email if that's what they like. You know, department head's elected officials over a little different, their interaction is a little different than most people.
Okay, thank you.
Some people like me, you got to do a lot of paperwork for them, okay? Because, I mean, I can work with the internet computer, but I sure like the hard copy. Can you understand that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I have one like that.
We have two. Is it okay for employees to watch the executive meeting on, or on county time?
I honestly don't like it because we have board meetings during the day. That's what all of our meetings are during the day. And we have ours recorded as well, but they're broadcast on YouTube. I prefer them not to watch the meeting unless there is something that's going to affect them directly.
Yeah, what's my next question? If you're my boss and I want to watch it and it's pertinent to me, are you going to let me watch it?
I, and never jeans to something that has to do with them, yes.
Okay. Are you experienced with MERS retirement? Do you have MERS at the retirement system?
And we did it for Claire as well.
Okay. What's your opinion on someone buying out time to retire early?
We don't allow it. We didn't allow it in Claire. We get, we allow, there was a time period that some people had worked part-time, and so they weren't allowing that time to be added to the years of service. So, a previous administrator that we had allowed pay, allowed them to buy that additional, or get that additional time, but we only allowed it for a certain time period. Once that had passed, we didn't allow it after. So, we, and we do not allow for them to purchase that time right now in Oceana either.
Why?
Out of the area, I don't know, it's just an impulse thing that they...
I mean, sometimes if there's somebody that's got a signature or an illness coming up or something, I think there's always an exception. And also, if you retire a person who's making much more than a starting officer, there's a lot of money to be saved there also.
Keep in mind, we don't have a DB plan any longer. You have a defined benefit here?
Yes.
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 We do not.
Okay.
Our defined contribution.
It's changed a lot. Okay, thank you.
So, your budget is, and let's go to, well, you can speak with Claire County or Oceana if it pines to it. Did you do any grant writing yourself, or did you have a grant writer?
I have done grant writing, not a lot of it, but I have done some. We have grant writers in Oceana and Clare County, and we now have a economic development director, and he does the grant writing now. We're dealing through several grants right now that we're working through in our own field. Just finished up a workforce development diversification study that we had done. We had a housing needs assessment, so we're through several of them that I have worked with a lot.
Sure. And then millages administering, millages, have you been through that process for additional? Did you have any, like, senior service millages or anything?
So, we just did three renewals, or we're working through three renewals through Oceana right now that will be on the ballot for August. New millages, they just, they did one prior to me coming to Oceana, which was for a jail millage that would not pass. But I worked through a heartstone recreation and a jail millage through Claire County many years ago, and go with their like that.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Tracy, it's my turn.
Okay.
You've been at Oceana just two years.
Yep.
You've had a lot of staff turnover, retirements and turnover. If we were to reach out to elected officials there or staff there and ask them about, what does it feel like to work in your district? Or what, how stable is it? Or how predictable is it? What would we hear about worker satisfaction and worker involvement? And I'm not talking about just the elected officials, I'm talking about all levels of staff. What's a sense of how they feel working in Oceana County? And what credit or lack of credit do you take for that?
We have a couple of different departments that have a lot of turnover, and I've heard, we've done some, my HR department has done some excellent articles. So, sometimes it has to do with the clerk head, other times it's that they've been let go because of their work habits, or they're not, they're not coming to work, those types of things. The sheriff's department, we've learned that a lot of that has to do with the merger retirement. We now have a DC plan, so that's what they're getting, that's what new employees are receiving. And I don't know if you see the same thing that I do or what my department does, but there's a generational issue going on that people don't want to come to work, they feel entitled, they, we don't need to call in, you know, those types of things. So, we're seeing that a lot. So, I, there's certain departments that if we talk to them, they're going to, they're going to say that there's the issue, or some of the employees may say that there's a couple of departments that are having issues with the department head, and that's why things aren't good and those types of stuff. But I try to do what I can, talking to staff as I'm walking down the hall, getting to know people just in passing. I keep a candy dish full of chocolates for anybody who wants to come in and have a little sweet treat, you know, when they're headed to the restroom or, and my husband will tell you, we go through a lot of it, but just trying to keep employee morale up. I buy gifts for the entire staff in the courthouse, and they might be $5 gifts, but they're all wrapped up, and they can come to our office and pick a gift at Christmas time or those types of things. And Claire, we did, we had a hot block for Chris West, and we used our vending machine money to purchase gifts for, to give away to the employees, drinks, and we wanted all the elected officials and the judges and everybody to come and join. And so, I think it's important, trying to do some of those things to keep employee morale up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You got time for another question before you go?
Oh, I didn't know I would be up next. Let's see. Do you know, I think, well, I like this question, just general. Oh, okay. How about your experience in labor negotiations?
So, Claire County has seven labor contracts. Oceana has two. So, there's quite a, I haven't been through the one through Oceana yet because there's just 2025. And we have the same labor attorney that we have. We have the same labor attorney we have in Clare County as well. So, I have actually negotiated off some contracts. So I have actually negotiated off some contracts on my own. In Claire, the one year, the reps came and asked if I would be willing to sit down with all of them and talk about labor negotiations and without the attorney, without their representatives. And I said, yes, I'm willing to do that, but it starts getting ugly and I'm walking out. So, um, we sat down and came to an agreement, every one of us, and we settled the contracts for three years. Um, and I've been, also been involved with Matt Nordberg, one who's done at Claire County and, and worked through the contracts there through those processes too. And it's a matter of compiling information and, um, maybe minimal, well, financial stability of the county and those types of things though.
Again, thanks for being here, Tracy. What I looked through your resume and is, obviously you have a great deal of county administrative experience, but as far as educationally, I don't see a lot of financial training, although you've been obviously involved through there. So can you kind of expound on your financial knowledge as far as state administration, budget rules? We would need someone who can oversee this transition, so we need someone with a deep understanding of that. So if you could just help us understand your experience and knowledge there, please.
Um, I do not have a CPA. I have taken, um, a couple of county classes when I went to college, uh, first one, then second, and then, uh, one in the back if I could read. Um, so I have been working on county budgeting since I started in 1999. I had some of the best, um, people to teach me how to do that job because back then, um, county clerk was working alongside, um, one of the county commissioners to complete their budget. They were, they, you know, they were pretty new with the administration piece. And so I learned a lot from them. And there are so many pieces to, um, budgeting that a lot of people don't understand when, um, when looking at a budget. Just for example, DA 106, those are substance abuse monies. And we know that 50% of those have to go to a substance abuse facility. Well, just recently they changed that to 40%, so they're getting 40% of those monies now. And those are, um, just things that I pick up on when listening to, um, Mac talk about legislative updates and the different things that are being passed down, paying attention to what our auditors have to say. Zoomings, trainings, just different types of things, just to keep, um, keep up to date on all that information. So, um, no, I don't have CPA, but I do, uh, I'm, I'm.
And so knowing the, you know, the task of creating the finance department and moving forward with a software, kind of some, you know, fairly large changes, you feel comfortable you have the, the skill set and the tools to do that then? Thank you.
In your, in your cover letter, you mentioned that you have developed policies and ordinances for the county board and followed through with implementation. Can you give us an example or have you given us an example of a policy or ordinance that you, um, developed for Oceana County?
Um, we had a house of memory ordinance that, um, I put together for Claire County. Policies, um, we just went through a complete overhaul of our, um, our board policies for Oceana County, but I put together the actual board policies for Claire and we implemented And we are working through a 200 and some page document right now that's already been created. It's our personnel policy, uh, we're making changes to that right now and working with the county attorney just to make sure that, uh, that is something we have a problem with.
And I think you mentioned a personnel committee?
Yes.
What other committees do you have at the?
So the board commissioners have, um, the four committees in the whole. Um, we have courts of public safety.
Courts of public.
Yeah, courts of public safety, personnel and health and human services, uh, properties and environmental, and then, um, finance and administration. So when we're creating the, uh, agendas, um, whichever, uh, what was coming before the board, it would go under those committees and that's when they discuss those.
It goes already established when you went, came to Oceana, correct?
Those are new.
Those are new?
Yes. Um, we had other ones previous to that. They were, um, they were also doing, um, any item that was being brought to the board that they were approving was all done by resolution. And, um, I had asked them to use resolutions basically for special, special items rather than, um, doing a resolution for every action item. So they, they have now changed over to new motions. So this is just a.
So you brought this, a, a new idea to the board and they are happy with the direction that is going in right now? Great, great, thank you.
You said that you did a wage study.
Yep.
Would you tell me what that was, why, what it was like and how did it end?
So, um, in Claire County, we work with our business officials and see where we are, where we work comparable. Um, so I reached out to, um, the comparable counties, um, according to population, SEV, um, and taking a look at the amount of employees. And I gathered that information, put it together for the board commissioners and.
So you did it?
Yes.
You didn't hire it out?
No, I did.
Okay.
I have worked with, um, there is a gentleman that does, um, wage studies and he's called on me quite a few times to gather information for a study he might be doing for somebody else. And he shared those, um, those studies with me. So I kind of had, um, some information to go off of to help me get through, get through that sort of stuff.
So you presented it to the commissioners?
Yep.
Can I ask what happened?
Um, we ended up making some changes within the, we, then some of the employees wages. We've got three months. They did it at Oceana too, that was prior to coming there and, um, that one was very sensitive. It's, um, very sensitive.
I was going to get into that question about what she thinks of wage studies. Uh, usually that are done and nothing happens and then a whole bunch of friction. People says, why did they get this raise and I didn't? What I want to ask you is, the average inflation rate for 2023 was 4.1 on the CPI. Before you get in negotiations, do you consider that 4.1? Bring it up to the scale?
I, we have, so, yeah.
So if you give me 3%, I'm still down 1.1.
We, we usually look.
Right? I mean.
We usually look at comparable, um, to other counties and say, oh, we usually will off that, but, um.
Spoken like someone on the other side of the table.
Yeah. I know where you were coming from.
Too many other considerations. So, so your wage study, um.
I'm done, yes, you already have.
Well, I think you were going to just chime in yourself. We did say informal. So you looked at comparable counties and, and kind of went from there. So did you have any employees that were overpaid that had to then take a pay cut because they were overpaid? Or did you find that you made some adjustments because you had some that didn't, uh, reach a, a level that others had?
So they, um, we didn't, um, we didn't give pay cuts. They were, they're, wages may have been frozen for, um.
A couple of years.
And they did the same, same thing in Oceana, I know. So, you know, we, we looked at, um, we just looked at, um, some that, right, some that we had to adjust to move them off, the other one, we, we never gave pay cuts.
Or they were frozen for a couple of years or something along that line? Yeah. That's kind of where I was going from because it's not a hard time. All right. And then, um, uh, we covered negotiations and budgeting and labor and, um, that's all for now.
I can think of something.
I'm going to ask about communications with board members. And you did talk some about that, but I'd like you to think of a couple of instances during your two years at Oceana where you were especially successful at working with the board on something. And then talk about a time when you dropped the ball somehow with communication and you wished you had done it differently.
Well, you, you know, I talked a little bit about the going from resolutions to motions and that was quite a transition of working through something with the board. Quite a change for them all. And it took me a little while to get on board with that, but the process worked very well and, um, I write the motions for them. The motions are all ready on the agendas and they, they may change them up a little bit by adding a little something or changing up something, but the motions are all ready for them and, um, I think it's worked very, very well. And I'm not perfect, so I'm sure there was something there.
Well, you haven't surprised your board. Have they surprised you?
Um, no. Most generally, um, they, they are real sticklers about nothing being added to the So most generally, we don't, we don't add anything unless they're talking at the next board meeting about adding something to the board policy or, um, adding non-action items to the agenda. And ask them if we can do something like that way. There's not even a word or something to that effect, but if it's an action item, they don't want to, they don't want to be surprised by that. They run it to a.
Can I ask one more question that relates to board and, and Melinda's saying, no, I can't. The, you've been there two years. You've gone through the formal evaluation process with your board commissioners. What were the strengths they identified and what were the areas needing improvement that they identified?
Um, I just went through one. The most recent one was, um, they're wanting more financial information, um, which I'm working on some different reports for them to see exactly what they like because, um, I don't have a finance person in Oceana that's, I work through that, through most of that stuff. So I'm working through some of their reports for them to see if, um, this is what they're looking for. So we'll find out because this will be the first meeting since, um, I had my evaluation to see if that's what they're looking for. And they're wanting, um, more communication with, perhaps elected officials and talking about, um, more than just coordinating.
Quinn?
So here you would have a finance department. I am wondering what you see as your role as CFO?
Um, well, from the job description, it still states that I would be putting the budget, going through the budget process part, um, of course, including finance, I would think, and county clerk. So that would be also something that I would like more questions about, um, how that process is working through right now.
Right.
Just because, um, because I don't have a finance department in Oceana and things work a little bit different. I'm responsible for budget adjustments. There's some journal entries that I do. Some of the journal entries are done by our AP clerk. Some are done by my HR because she's part fiscal officer, so, or she does some fiscal stuff. So the process is probably going to be a little bit different. I don't want to come in and make a bunch of changes and say, you know, just upset everything that they're used to doing, the way they're used to doing it. If, if, if I come in and suggest something, maybe working through a process a little bit differently, um, but I would like, I would like their own files, why?
Yeah, this is something to be created.
Yep.
It's, it's evolving. We have an excellent interim, so.
Any other questions? Just Kim.
Yeah, I think you're pretty humble. And, and I think it might come, my, my feeling from you is that you, I quoted, I wrote down a quote, you said, "We all have a job to do." And I think that was in relation to everybody else in the county building, that you really respect people that you work for and see your place. I guess what I'm concerned a little bit with is that we need a, we need a, we need energy, you know? I think to, to take us to where we want to go, I feel like we need, um, we need some really positive energy. And I guess I'm just asking you how you think you might find that in yourself, your, your true self that you have shared with us, how you can translate that to the employees in the building, that you're the person to take us to this next, next level. Does that?
So, um, I am somewhat humble, but, um, I'm, um, I try to get my point across, suggestions, giving things to a certain area. I mean, I like to have everything written out and, and, um, say that, um, these are the reasons that we should be doing it in this order or this way. But I also like to hear what, um, staff have to say about those things because they might have been working on those things or, um, they may have a better idea than I knew, possibly. I mean, there, it's just a matter of working together to get, um, get to the same, to the same place. And I.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I was just getting my place in the queue. So I can only answer for this one commissioner, but I'm going to kind of give an answer and then allow you to expand on it. So like the, the role that I envision for the CFO portion of this job is, uh, a, enough knowledge, enough excitement. It would involve vision, likes, like long-term strategic planning. How do we get through the changes that are need to be made? How do you handle the people part of that equation? And how do you handle the, um, the, just the, we already have an excellent, like day-to-day, like the, the stuff you're doing, we've got Kathy over there does an excellent job. It's like a change agent type person. Okay, we have to get to what we decided as a board is a vision and that's what we'd be looking at, at least in my mind, if I'm trying to judge, it's like, will you, will you get us there? Will you move this thing forward and, you know, and, and not do the work so much? But be a vision, be a change, be visionary, be a change agent. Yeah. So I'm kind of answering your question of at least what this commissioner thinks that looks like. I'm only speaking myself. So based on that, can you tell us, I mean, I'm asking, I think Commissioner Ross is. So based on that, can you tell us, I mean, I'm asking, I think, Commissioner Ross's question in another way by giving you an answer to your question.
Thank you.
So, so kind of help us, that's, that's what I want to see you, tell us how you're going to do.
So you, so from the job description, I'm still responsible for the budget piece, but the, say, adjustments, general entries, those types of things are done by finance.
Correct.
Yes. So, and that's what I got from what I was reading. And that, um, that allows me more time to be able to, um, to schooling with regards to the financial things, changes that are being made, or, um, different things that are happening. So under finance, does, does she do the accounts payable payroll? Do you have two separate people that do that? Is that, has that not been moved yet? I guess those are questions that I have.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, basically, those functions are done on a daily basis right now. That's how we operate. We have, we have, we have the nuts and bolts being done every day. We need to transition some of that further. I mean, we need to develop a little bit more staff as a part of this. We need some more help. But again, you, in my mind, I guess I'm still not quite getting the answer I'm looking for. How do you, what do you bring that drags this forward from a, you know, kind of, kind of get rid of the nuts and bolts, and that's where you've been a lot, so it's very hard to get to that answer. Oh, we, we have the nuts and bolts, we have the thing, but, but how do you, how do you, how do you walk us through, because this board can't do it on a day-to-day basis. Someone has to take the vision of this board, of what they want to see with the accounting systems and the, and the, and the new department and implement it. And that's not the nuts and bolts, that's just, you know, and that's not specifically, like, step A and B, it's just, how would you, what do you bring to the equation to do that? Okay?
So.
Yeah. I'm still trying to, is that still what you're looking for, Commissioner?
Yes.
We're still trying to get the same answer. Okay, great.
So the, um, when I went to Oceana, we didn't have the accounts payable in my office yet.
Okay.
It was just the payroll, and that was still in the court's office. That was eventually moved to my office, and we were overseeing the entire processes for, I was overseeing, I am overseeing, the payroll and the accounts payable, and then HR. So we, that's what I would envision, that those, those would all be under me, but you still have a treasurer and a clerk that sign off on the checks.
Sure.
Therefore, they're still reviewing what's being paid, so you have your checks and balances. You also have finance who is looking through those check registers to make sure that things aren't being paid that shouldn't be paid, or they're not being paid in this check level, you know, it's on every day, a prepaid check, according to the way that we do it. It's prepaid, and then we have bills, the bills are approved by, or claims approved by board officials. So that is what I, that's what I envision, is having that all under, the accounts payable, payroll, and finance all underneath, and then we look through processes to make sure that checks and balances are being.
Thank you.
Could, may I expand on that a little bit? So you, I, I guess, it's to be determined, but I would see that flip, but maybe I'm just may not be understanding exactly how you were saying it. So I would say finance department's doing all the, okay, payroll, checks, claims and accounts, and you are just basically overseeing that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure I understood that.
We've asked you lots of questions, and it's your turn to ask us.
So what obstacles would you see someone like me facing in this role?
Rather than obstacles, I just see, um, I see benefits. I think you yourself have mentioned, and other candidates have mentioned, that we're financially in a really good place. We're staff-wise and employee-wise in a, in a very good place. We're seeing, we do have some issues with some outstanding obligations. We've gotten into broadband, and we don't quite know yet how we are going to finish paying out that. You know, a few issues where this is our brand-new courthouse, and, and now it's already 20, 20 years old, and, so we're facing a few issues with that. But all in all, you know, there's, there's a lot of fortunate things here for an administrator to walk into, I believe, rather than obstacles.
I, I think, you know, change is never easy for everyone, and so there, there is, I think, you know, your, your people skills in, in this transition are going to be almost more important than almost anything else in a way, because it's hard to change when you've been doing something a long way, and what you've been doing is working. And, you know, so I think, you know, gathering consensus, gathering input, listening to those that are doing it now, and, and then trying to move that forward in a, in a way to get the buy-in from everybody. You know, I, you know, I don't see it as an honorable problem, but it's, you know, it's going to take some, some work to, to work with everyone. Change isn't the end easy for any of us. So that's probably what I would say would be in my mind.
I think too, you know, we have a lot of institutional, really some veteran staff and elected officials, and we have a public that's pretty demanding, pretty, pretty active, pretty a part of our meetings, part of our communication, and, and that takes quite a bit of time, because you're funneling a lot of those concerns and helping us deal with them effectively. So I would say those are, you know, trying to gain your footing here, being new to not the position so much, but the county. You're going to have to really dig in, and I don't think you'll have a problem, I think you've got the skills to do it, but I think it's going to be, it's, there's challenges with personalities and just, you know, a lifetime of experiences that you'll have to kind of get up to speed on quite quickly. But, yeah, we're, yeah, we're looking forward to having someone new to help us go forward, so.
Anything else?
Um, one thing I, I just want to, this isn't really a question, it's more something, something that I wanted to bring up, is that county administrators, although our jobs are the finance and people you go for to provide some information and things are so important, those are your top priorities, there's so many things that the state puts on us, or additional things that are coming up, the materials management factors, factors in what Ego is giving us, and, you know, working through that at Oceana. I put together a group of surrounding counties, we got together and I said, hey, we would like to collaborate with all of you to work through this material management, because I know this isn't something that I'm familiar with. So we're getting ready to sign those agreements with the West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission to handle that for us, and that, that'll be, uh, by, by county collaboration. So we're working through that, broadband, and opioid settlements, and all of those things. I just want to, you know, just want to reiterate, though, sometimes taxing it can be for all of us, boards and administrators, and, um, it is keep giving us more.
Well, we're going to have one more interview today, and then we're going to chat and see where we go, and we'll be working with Mr. Jenick, and he'll be in touch with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy, for coming.
Thank you, Tracy.
Have a good day.
Could we recess for 15 minutes?
Yep.
We will reconvene. Thank you, Mr. Belcher, for being here again. And this, today's a little bit less formal, and we want to talk with you. We'd like to start out by you sharing with us what you've been thinking about since the last time you were here, what you've learned, and then we all have some questions that are going to be less formal than last time, and we'll just go around the circle, and at the end, we're going to invite you to ask us any questions that you might have.
Stir it up.
So thanks for being here.
You're welcome. Glad to be here, having the opportunity to talk with everybody again. Well, I can remember everything that I've looked at or studied and reviewed in the meantime. I made my, in the beginning, kind of, I made my third trip up here to talk to staff. A number of different people, particularly department heads, with their perspective of the different events, the issues unfolding here in the county, and what they thought that they'd like to see in a new administrator. I had a chance to review more of the approved budgets for the year, reviewing the budget rules, certain measures that are in existence right now. I read over again a couple of times the Raymond Recommendation Report on individual responsibilities, and standing at the departments here and accountability. And went over a few things with OMA. Looked at a couple of, a couple of other things there, the, I'm not sure if you've been in county yet, 1960 yet, just to read over. So I spent quite a good time looking at different documents and collectively talking to people up here on three different trips.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just thought you, you made three trips up here since your last interview with us, is it?
No, one trip.
Okay.
Since this process began, I made three total trips up from my, I live in Grand South, here since 99.
Okay.
Okay, including this trip.
Including, including this trip here and the last.
Well, let's see, whose turn started? Is it Melinda, or is it yours?
I think it's that end. I think it's Jamie last time.
Okay, Mr. what?
Yeah, all right, so, um, trying to remember everything we covered last time, so if we covered it, if there's anything else you'd mind to add or, or going more in depth to, so grant writing. Have you written any grants, or have you worked with grant writers? How have you done that in the past?
Well, I should probably narrow it down a little bit, because all the above.
Yeah, oh, that's good.
So for a while, I was dealing with, I became familiar with grants, again, 1999, 2000, ever on that timeframe. I've been involved in some capacity with grant writing reviews, recording ever since at the time, except for with a couple of years, and I went back into youth as a command officer.
Mostly MMRME grants or other sorts?
No, this is burn jag. Both of the grants I dealt with were burn jag grants. One was a stimulus grant.
Is that the best cups? Burn, or no, that was a different one?
It covers a lot of different things, including probably some things that you've seen in the special projects, radio communications, drug courts.
That's.
A number of different things, and now the task force, folks only get a small percentage of that. So my job, part of my responsibilities currently, is to work with the team commanders, review all grant applications, make sure that all the metrics are present there, make sure that the budgeting is correct in those grants, make sure that all the distribution formulas are there, make sure there's a plan for reporting. And because I've been down a same-team commander, and that's the one that you remember, and actually covers Straits Area, about Galar's North to the Bridge, and the, and the Potaski, since they've been down with Lieutenant, I've gotten firsthand experience again, going back in and actually writing the grant proposal, doing grant reporting poorly on that, collecting the information for the grant reporting, so I've got a significant background, not only in writing and administrative grants, but in finding new grants. I know we'll look for those different grant opportunities, and also how to assess whether or not they're a fiscally viable thing for a governing body to look at, because some grants out there, as many of you probably know, are so difficult to navigate with requirements and metrics to be reported on that may not be worth the actual monetary award that you might receive them.
Right, right. Okay, and then how about, have you ever had to, have you ever worked with millages, putting one on the ballot? Have you ever had to work on anything like that?
I've worked with different sheriffs on the consideration of millages.
Okay.
To pay for, help offset some of the costs with personnel. Our grant structure changed, whereas we had the ability with the burn grant to offset some of our detective salaries years ago that gap year, and now none of our monetary expenditures are for personnel costs, other than administrative disability costs. So, and it was not an extremely popular proposition. The fact is, with any elected official, to entertain the idea of an extra mileage coming on, and so we never enacted that, and we had plenty of discussions about how to frame that before we were going to move on.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Kind of difficult interviewing this gentleman.
I bet.
Several years ago, and, and a few times off and on, you've often asked me about being a county administrator. This isn't, you're not jumping from one job to another. You've always wanted to be a county commissioner. Why? I mean, you're jumping off a fast train.
Administrator.
No, I don't know that I'm jumping off a fast train, so to speak, Mr. Ward. I don't know, I think this is going to be still a fast train. I don't see many aspects of this position, especially currently, the different dynamics that are still unfolding to be easy or a slower-paced environment than what I've been accustomed to in my current position. I believe, and I mentioned it a little bit before in the first discussion, that I bring the skill set, I bring the leadership, I bring the situational leadership, knowing whether or not I need to be front in line and charged through that door, and there will be instances of what's unfolding here where that's, that's probably going to happen. So what did happen? Now I'm going to need to pick up that mantle and be that first person that's going through in that, that kind of door. And there are other times where it's more conducive to gather that staff in, but it's where it's more conducive to provide the framework for people to step in and contribute to making those leadership decisions. So I bring the people skills, I bring the leadership background, I bring the experience with conflict, the conflict management, and that's been unfortunately a, a staple at times in the environment that I'm in, because I deal with a lot of people who are very, very strong-willed. I deal with three different task force governing boards, and in subsets of those governing boards, I deal with the boards of commissioners and city councils, and there's a number of different entities across northern Michigan. And a lot of people are involved in these elected positions, and sheriffs, and appointed as chiefs, and commissioners, and even the non-elected board positions for the teams have very strong opinions, so being able to navigate the positions that they have and discuss things with people and make sure people are aware that you're not always going to win each and every time, and there'll be times where things work out better for you as an individual, with what direction you'd like to see things go for them, and times where it may not be quite as conducive to what you were looking for, and that's life. And that's life, being able to get that message across on different issues to everybody while still remaining professional and polite and perfunctory and doing what should be done on these issues and just taking it, being willing to take that stand. And that's part of my job currently and that's what I see part of my job gain here at the time, is having that internal fortitude when it's necessary to be that leader, to demonstrate that leadership, but to make some tough decisions in that. So that's my background, that's what I've done and that's why I feel I'm situationally the right candidate for this position.
I've been told I need to sit up when I talk. But he can hear me.
I know. So thank you for coming again. You know, so this job is for an administrator slash CFO. And that's because we have very, we need someone with deep knowledge of finance to work with us to set up a finance, finalize the setup of a finance department and be able to take an active role, to be determined, but be able to take an active knowledgeable And we have moved from straight administrator to administrator slash CFO for very specific reasons. Tell me why you applied, other than your buddies are here and you would be an excellent And everybody, I think, in the sheriff's office has come over and told us you were wonderful.
I have one buddy sitting up here. I have, I have a number of people, I've got each and every person sitting here that I'd say that I feel confident I've developed a very good professional relationship, but I have the one buddy and that's it. I feel like I'm indebted, even felt very responsible for being an advocate for every single person here. I only work in this department for the commissioners, whether it's the sheriff's department, registered deeds, it doesn't matter to me. My perspective is, is that I owe each and every one of these individuals that same measure of professionalism, that same measure of open ear, that same measure of my attention as far as walking in, engaging with those people and finding out what is it that you need to be more effective at choosing and going that route. I applied for this job because I've done what I can do in my, in my current position. I've had people set up for success and it's time to just step aside and let them on the show. I've done what I can do to prepare them. I have no regrets about going. I'm not leaving my agency, my section, my area. And I would have a problem with that if I was, I wouldn't be coming here to do that so. I have, as I mentioned, not only the leadership part of things, but the financial background of dealing with budgets for my different units as far as constructing those budgets, adhering to those budgets, reporting on those budgets and having an accountability system in place for those budgets and having dealt with even a much larger budget when I was down working as commander at the Cadillac Posture for a couple of years. Even a larger budget, I got operation there with the full sub systems department. So I have knowledge of standardized budget sheets, not from just having gone to graduate school, but actual practical knowledge, working in these different environments and working with fiduciary agents, not independently, but with fiduciary agents and making sure that I have the threat comprehension of understanding of these budgets, how they work and what needs to be done if we're being in unique problem areas and identifying circumstances early to be part of that. So I bring that piece of it to the table as well. I'm not a CPA, but I have good working knowledge of finances, I have excellent leadership skills and problem management skills, project management skills, capital asset background, putting up a brand new building. For one of my offices, brands thinking new, constructed that. So a number of different hats that I've worn that have been just fantastic to wear down that have given me the experience and depth of knowledge that I find as I look into this position where I correspond quite well to what's expected of a person who's appointed to this job.
So what would you do to help us set up our, help us finish setting up our finance department?
Well, the first thing that I need to do is find out exactly where it's at. My understanding is this has been going on for a period of time as far as the mandate that came forward from the body of commissioners that existed then for this to happen, that may not have occurred in the most perfect manner, but this is what this board wants to do, is move this thing forward and see it happen. So I need to touch base quickly with the people that are intimately involved in this circumstance and find out exactly where this process is at for each department, what remains to be done, why certain portions of it have not been accomplished to this point and developing a plan in concert with what they have to say, but also some leadership elements on my part to advance this thing and look forward to completion. That's where I come into it, is managing that and corralling those efforts and making sure that what's being done currently is aligned with what, with what the board wants to see as far as developing and standing up these new departments.
Okay, thank you. So just a handful of people that constituents have asked if it's a good decision to have two law enforcement people in high level positions here in the county, illegitimate, looking at your 24 years stellar work with the Michigan State Police.
24.
Isn't that what it said?
No.
34, I'm sorry, 34.
Took 10 years off.
34, sorry.
You just got younger.
24 years in command, okay, so 34 years. Anyway, so listening to their concerns and here, listening to you today, you know, and in the absence of Commissioner Kramer, who usually follows this line of questioning, I'm just going to ask, what skills in providing support for our county staff would you be offering to, let's say, a typical worker in the equalization department or the building and ground, or, you know, building, you know, I'm just wondering how that might, your skills at what you've been doing for the last 34 years will translate to serving all of the people that call this their workplace?
Well, one of the questions that, when I met with, during one of my three trips, I met with a certain individual here in this building. And she asked me, she said, "Do you have the ability to say no in consideration of my employment background and my relationship with law enforcement?" And the answer to that is yes. I have the equal ability and fortitude when it's right then to do, to say no to whichever entity it might be, whether it's the sheriff's office, any other department here, depending on what circumstance exists, that's, that's not an issue for me. I believe that the sheriff's office plays a vital role in public safety, we're community members here in this county and it's extremely important in the budget to flex that, not the importance that commissioners are attached to this function. As far as the ability to say no to whoever, I can do that. Keep in mind that my role that I have, my role is that I've been is managing, if you will, civilian administrative assistance that work in my offices, constructing their employment contracts, making sure that they have what they need to function every day and they're not enlisted in first man officer, and working hand in glove with different people in the finance offices where the budget are created, working hand in glove with different commissioners, as I mentioned, the council members. So I have plenty of experience working to achieve common goals with a number of different people in the market, cops. And I know how to, and have been for several years, very effective at picking off that mantle and putting it over here. And rarely, it's been years since I've actually had a uniform on. In some ways, I've missed it because I think that that's, I'm proud of what my agency has done, but I realized for a long time that there are other elements to affecting good county government, regional government, township government. A lot of that goes well beyond just public safety services from the agency. And so what I bring is, is the skills of working, as I mentioned, with different, different people from different backgrounds, many of whom are high caliber type A individuals, but a lot of people who weren't. And I've grown to be very, very adept at obtaining opinions and perspectives from those people who are not heard very often. And if you don't directly solicit that, if I didn't do that and pay attention to those two or three people in the ring on attendance that never say anything and collect that information from them and find a way to do that, you miss out or I've missed out on valuable pieces of information when I haven't done that. So I've learned to assimilate that skill too, of listening and soliciting information from people who aren't always willing to provide that. So with those things in mind, that's why I think irrespective of which department it would be in here, I can make a help, I would make a help.
Okay.
Well, thanks again for being here, Mr. Belcher. I'm going to dig a little deeper again. I mean, you're, you're great personality skills, administrative side, but this is an administrator slash CFO position designed specifically for a purpose. And the purpose is to, you know, hopefully the creation of the finance department, but also specifically to, to implement some of the changes recommended in Raymond Report, which would be a whole new software system. So we'd be looking for someone who would be able to evaluate coding systems, work with staff to bring a recommendation to us and to have the vision and knowledge to oversee that going forward. And I just need you to help me some, understand what, what you bring to do that. I mean, there's a lot of other stuff you got here that this part I struggle with, to be honest. So help me, help make it believe right, okay?
Well, I know from talking with the people here in the building that there's a potential transition down the road, potentially getting into B S L A, software from the HARA system. I'm not intimately familiar with the HARA system, other than having looked at the reports, a couple of reports generated from that system. I can tell you that I have done software analysis as far as suitability for purchasing or acceptance in my current position and in fact, just recently was involved in a decision to make an expensive purchase of software from a vendor. It's called the eRad system. And this is a system that has to do, there is some budget component to it, but it's more a system for geo fencing and helping with, with different criminal investigations where you don't have a great number of suspect leads, but you certainly get a number of suspects and people that were at a given location. And this helps with phone identification, it helps with determining different accounts that these people may be using their apps electronically. And so that was, went through a, quite a period of time there with significant amount of time evaluating that software, working with the vendor and training modules to bring that forward to different people that I work to and the people that work with me to see whether or not that software would be an ideal system. One of the things that was the hinge pin part of deciding to go with this software, which is new and novel, is the fact that it could assist the teams with overdose death investigations, which is a critical element of what we're dealing with here at times in this county, but more so in Grand Travis and Wexford, where we have people that are ingesting different types of chemical drugs that are very potent and are not surviving it. And we don't always know who is on scene when it unfolded to work on identifying who that responsibility, responsible party is for that death. So this particular software program incorporated that element as well, which was something that we needed to have, which was the geo fencing capacity to work off in phones and identify who was present and then help us with the financial end of things to determine which different applications were being used by these folks, what money was where, whether or not there were any perceived physical, electronic accounts anywhere that were, and also plastic cards come with that. It's a component of that program as well. So I have familiarity with my teams, with the different systems that are in place and how the different budget recording software systems, what they produce, and each one of those is different because there's a different fiduciary agent for each team and everybody produces their reports in a slightly different manner. More directly, I have current experience with that eRad program, which again, slightly different from the true through or through budget program, but still an evaluation and implementation process with that program.
Thank you.
Mr. Belcher, I'm, I'm impressed that you made a special trip up here and talked to staff and you asked them the question, what's a county need, what's a county looking for? Could you, I don't want you to betray individual confidences, but could you talk about the number of people you talked to and the, the kinds of people in the courthouse here that you talked to and whether you think that gave you a pretty good indication of the entire county or was it? Because obviously we're sitting here and everybody knows you're one top notch cop, but we, we want more than that. So we know, we know that Rookie supports you and we know that you have a lot of support upstairs in the prosecutor's office and, and the jail and then the sheriff's office. But talk about what you're hearing from the rest of the staff.
Well, just to be clear on something, I'd like to think that I was more of a, more than just a top notch. You know, yeah, all my moments where things turned out beyond even my expectations on different cases and that's wonderful, but the real core element of, of being successful in my role was treating people well. And I found out real quickly as a younger detective, younger officer, if I didn't do that, my odds or ability to be successful in my, in my work was diminished greatly. It just was not going to happen. And I had, and also I had to learn, and this was not a big stretch for me, to be authentic and genuine with the people that I was working with on these cases. You may not necessarily, I did not like some of the things that they did. I walked into these family environments and some of these houses and dealing with certain people and it was not a pleasant thing, so you immediately have a distaste that develops. But it's important to remember that there's still the human aspect and for me it was to whomever I was dealing with. And it was important for me to represent things fully, completely on a police report. I had to have the ability to interact with other people. So I say all that to say, I'd like to think that it went beyond just the cop element of it.
And of course it does or you wouldn't be here. So thank you.
But anyway, on the other part of things, as you asked a more pertinent question, the staff, I obtained a lot of meaningful feedback about the operations in the building, about people that maybe were a little bit more satisfied with how things unfolded and people that were less so, about how it unfolded. What I, what I found, and I didn't go into court, but what I found to be a more of a basic theme was optimism, that the staff here in this building felt like this could be done with the right person at the helm, that this was achievable and that it had gone on maybe for too long was another pervasive part of things. And the impression I got was they wanted to see this thing moving forward, they reached a completion stage and they felt it was achievable. And I talked with the people and told, I didn't rush through my conversations at all to put in, I took my time because I was interested enough in this job and felt enough of a calling for this position to where I felt it was important to hear everybody through on what they had to say. So when they were done speaking to me, that's when So when they were done speaking to me, that's when that conversation concluded.
Well, I know you said that one person said you need to be able to say no, and yes, you do, and you also need to be able to say yes. What no answers were you, what kinds of things would you say no to, and what kinds of things would you say yes to?
What I'm going to say no to is any, I mentioned this in my department interview here, is any kind of activity or conduct keeping anybody on board at my offices where there's been an inference of an integrity risk violation. I'm not, I'm not going to say yes to even inferences of non-transparency to reporting different things in a certain manner that is not accurate by anybody, which is not going to happen. That's not the way to conduct business. That's not the right thing to do. That's not the right thing for the constituents. In my world, I just could not have that. I just could not have those elements and be successful with the confidence of people, people in the public or otherwise, or the media that I work extensively with, or a lot of other entities out there, the courts. I could not have even that shred of doubt. And yes, it's important that I'm fair to people, and I am invited by those contractual rules, and did what I could do for them because I still have that measure of empathy, even when I'm dealing with someone that may have violated my authority in some form or fashion. But that's enough. I can't keep somebody on board, and I had to go toe-toe a couple of times with administrators, sheriffs, on issues of that nature, on recalling somebody. And I did that just two, three years ago. It was not a pleasant circumstance at all, but it was something that I felt compelled, and the people that I report to felt compelled that that needed to be done, unfortunately. Saying yes, always look more forward to the saying yes part of things than the opposite side of that. But yes to opportunities, yes to different ideas that people have conceivably in this building about conducting business, about different ways to be more effective and efficient in what we're doing with software systems, recording mechanisms. If there's, if there's an idea and it's not, it doesn't violate some code law, or a mandate, or the rule of law, or some other ethical type circumstance, there's only a few things that should pop up where you absolutely cannot entertain suggestions or ideas from people. So I've looked at that, and I've done that. A lot of my administrative assistance at the different teams have come up with different ideas on projects, on our annual reports, we just generated here recently on how to report that information. So it's not just more comprehensive for our boards, for the teams, but it's also something with more value. How does this relate to what they would like to see information-wise in a chart or a graph? And is there some value with that we try to incorporate also, and this was more of them coming to me and saying, can we do this? Incorporate more graphic information, pictures that go along with the story, because he doesn't like that a little bit more of a picture work at times than just a whole bunch of verminage. It's something that's pertinent, that went into the casework, and so I would look at this building, for example, at being receptive to the idea of saying yes for different ideas that are put forward. And I think that's part of that, of my responsibility to go out and solicit that information, particularly from people who may not be inclined to say very much, work in this building. And I'm sure that we have a handful of people in this building, a percentage, five to 10% of people in here, are not inclined to step up and say very much, they're just quieter, type B, don't say very much, it's important to see what they have to say.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for, when our prior administrator, sitting in the back of the room there, chatted. If this ward said we need to get something done, he always found a way to do that with a yes answer, let's try. So it's important that we say no, and important that we say yes. Thank you. Melinda, you're on again.
All right. Can you just, I think you just may have touched on part of my question. So you have been in a position of authority, giving direction, et cetera, excuse me, just to make sure. So I've got a couple-part question. So I know you bring some skills along that line, but how difficult is it for you to ask for help or advice, instead of just assuming that, you know, I've done something similar, but I got this?
Well, it's not, I guess to be succinct with my answer, I try to have some manner of knowledge about whatever it might be, so I think there's just a personal pride on that that we all have. We don't like to appear like we don't know anything about what the topic of this subject is, but there are times where we do, where I, for instance, know a very limited amount of information about something, maybe I don't know anything about a particular issue. And so I am humble enough and down-to-earth enough to where, and I have enough professional collaboration out there with different existing county administrators and city managers and other staff persons, and I feel confident with the staff here in this building, I have the ability and without hesitation, would reach out and would make that a practice. Because it's my job to assimilate greater knowledge in some of these areas that we have. How am I going to do that? The best way to accomplish that is with the people that are here right now in this building, working hard to get their work accomplished, working hard to fulfill the requirements of that Raymond Report and the suggestions that we're going to report. And so, yeah, I'm going to reach out for that. I don't have any difficulty at all.
Okay.
With looking for assistance, I'm humble enough to do that. Pride issue for me, that goes by the wayside when it comes to doing the right thing, having the right piece of information, having expanded knowledge, making sure that we're serving the citizens here effectively and efficiently. And I can't do that if I walk around with this reported air of knowing what needs to be done all the time, having this infinite wealth of piece of knowledge. I simply don't, to be quite frank with you, I don't have that much.
Well, that was pretty much the second part of my question. We do have a lot of historical knowledge, a lot of tenure in the county, and quite often it's overlooked. At least in the last year and a half, it's just been overlooked and I might even say unrespected. And I think that that's a great loss, because many administrators sitting, or would-be administrators sitting there today have remarked on how well the county's positioned. And as I've shared with them, it's not by accident, it's been by a lot of hard work, and that's a part I don't want to see overlooked.
I would agree with you totally that it's the wrong move to dismiss that institutional knowledge. Changes happen, things happen, people go on, they make decisions to do something, but that happens, right? As time goes on. But it's the wrong approach to just outright dismiss institutional knowledge, particularly with people who've been doing things for a while, who've been in the trenches, who've got a couple of battle scars along the way. That's got to happen. That needs to be captured and be part of that decision-making going forward. I believe in that.
Yep. Thank you.
Kip, I guess I really don't have anything, just I want to thank you for the leadership 20 years ago. My partner was Pat Whiteford, who is now the Sheriff of Calcasas. A lot of guys came into your outfit with six months, every six months they change, every year. You don't know who you get, and it's quite often hard working with those people, telling them they got to do a rate plan, a buy, or whatever, and to adhere to the state police regulations, which was a nightmare. But I left the department because I didn't want to come back to the sheriff's department because it was enjoyable working with you. So that's it.
No, you know, that was really the best part of my job was assimilating people into my team settings. The people said to me, it's not going to work, bring it on, let's go, because I'm going to make it work. You know, let's do this. And to have, you know, there are these things that were mentioned or whispered in my ear about law, they've been involved in this, or they've been involved in that, or they may be a union representative or whatever, or maybe they haven't always gotten along well with other officers on the road. That was one of the best parts of my role, was taking folks, maybe on defense, with their skill sets, or viability, or commitment to enforcement-related work, and enrolling them in the team environment and bringing out those skill sets that they weren't using, or advancing skill sets that they didn't have. And I mentioned the first time that I was here, that probably my proudest, you know, achievement to this point, no, besides my kids and my big country, has been seeing people that I work with mentoring and that type of thing, advance to pinnacle levels of leadership in their different municipalities, cities, and different counties here in our region, who have them become chiefs, sheriffs, senior detectives, and maybe different things along that line, and even low-level men to become business people. And it's just been the best, the best feeling of the season. And so I didn't realize how much value that part of it had. But after arriving when I did in 1999 here in this area, and having an opportunity to build those teams, many times, and it was a tough environment that I walked into, that office where I walked into in 1999, it had been blown apart because of the big controversy that occurred with a certain court back then, I believe it was 98. And so I had to essentially, with the help of a few other people, build that team from the ground up with the correct people. And so I take great pride, a personal pride, it's one of the few things that I always have a senior pride of also being able to build teams. And that's what I would do here, is build this team. Take it from where Mr. Janik took it, and Mr. Lewis, who played interim functions as the interim administrator, and advance what needs to be done and build this team and make it more cohesive, and go forward in an environment here of trust, you know, that currently exists. And I think that's being regained. There's got a ways to go, to be clear about that, it's got a ways to go. And elevate that and take it to where it needs to be.
So we've probably partially covered this, but here you're working with department heads and elected officials. How do you envision making that whole thing work? Your, are you going to have department head meetings? Are you going to, how are you going to, how do you envision working with all of those people to make a whole?
Well, you have to say there, department head meetings, yes, right out of the gate to establish a baseline model here, for what needs to be accomplished, who's responsible for what, the core elements of business that the county is advancing right now, how that's being handled by each department, so certainly. But I feel that the best way to look at this elected department head, versus non-elected department head, is not to look at it really, everybody's department in this, this effort to make county business happen effectively and efficiently, everybody's department. So I realize the constraints that I would have. I'm no foreigner and would not be oblivious to the fact that maybe I don't have as much control, and I certainly wouldn't, for somebody that's been elected and cleared of offices and people. But if you incorporate, which I would do, individuals from all of these different walks of professional life here in county government, into your strategical plan to move forward, and you have everybody pulling at the reins and advancing this, which is what I would do, and I would sell, definitely would be capable of and would sell these different things, as being, this is our charge, this is what our Board of Commissioners, in concert with that recognition of the Board, has determined to be the correct way of advancing what we're doing here in the business. So getting everybody on board and making sure that everybody believes authentically that they're a part of this plan to advance this business is the direction that I would go with things. I would not take the approach of, well, they're an elected official, so I'm not going to use them as a challenge, or they're not an elected official, so I can leverage my authority with this particular person to do what they feel to see. It's a matter again of doing the right thing, of having everybody on board as a participant, and I believe I'm capable of accomplishing that by treating people the right way, by being a strong leader and making sure as well that people know, this is what needs to be accomplished, this is the time train that we have to accomplish this within, and this is what I'm thinking after conferring with you folks, these department leaders in this board, this is the best way to assimilate our efforts and get it done. So to sum that up, I would be real, not keen on trying to make this separation of elected versus non-elected as far as how I interact with people, and what I'm trying to do to get the county business going. I understand that exists, I know that if it comes push comes to shove, there's some differences in my ability to compel people to do different things, and they're within their statutory mandates as far as what to do and what not to do. But making people feel valued as a team member, and being able to convince people that this is the right way to go with our efforts and what we're doing business-wise, I think will take us a fair distance for this.
Thank you. So you actually brought up what I wanted to ask you, strategic planning. You mentioned it in your past role, 34 years. Have you ever led strategic planning or been a participant? And would you be interested in starting with us and working on identifying some of our...
We'll start this afternoon.
Okay. I guess I heard you say it, but I guess I'd not seen that in your...
To answer the yes, I've had a significant amount of responsibility for making sure the department's strategic plan, regardless to task force units, has carried out. And I've been the person that, for several years, constructed, again, at the input of my team commanders and my assistant team commanders, because oftentimes in different geographical areas, you might have better knowledge than I do about activities that would be more cumulative of what they're saying and service problems. So I constructed the actual district-level strategic planning for the task force units as far as what activity, what goal items that were going to be a safe run, a safe reduction in overdose deaths. That was one of the things that we still take a look at, and then activity measures to make that happen. Educational sessions that would take place with law enforcement groups, with different non-law enforcement groups, advocacy groups, which I'm a part of two or four of those still today, different other concerned citizen groups, different governmental entity bodies, departments that are not on the national level, capturing all of that information and then putting it into the plan. And that was my role, to establish those goals, to describe, in a measure of detail, the activities that would be undertaken. the activities that would be undertaken in support of achieving those goals, and then to report out on those, but most typically in a quarterly fashion. So, I certainly would be interested in working on something of that nature, a project of that nature, this commission group, subject group. So, I think it's, I think it's really important to have that piece there, just as, if nothing more, than a good guideline, to make sure that this group is pursuing those, those different activities and endeavors that correspond in the overall direction that the county wishes to get in its business, and therefore not getting too far off track anywhere in the other. So, I would, I would do something absolutely...
I'm going to circle back to the financial end again. You know, I think this board is pretty committed to the recommendations of Reven as far as modernization of our systems moving forward, whether that's DSA, I think it went here, I mean, that would be part of what we looked for from our chosen candidate to bring us options and explain to us which is the best and which of those are. But let's, for conversation's sake, let's say the decision has been made and it's a big departure from what we're doing, and now we have to get it done. What would you see as the biggest challenges in getting that information done? And how would you, what skill set, how would you approach those challenges?
Well, I've just had some recent experience with the state end of business, been dealing with a system called Signal. And that can be a bit of a convoluted circumstance in there. All state financial business payroll, vendor business, contracting, everything goes through that particular enterprise itself. It's now Signal Four, if it's an experiment. So, one thing that didn't necessarily happen, that, well, it's not an experiment because it's in place, and I don't think this is an avenue to go down with software systems on experimental nature. So, I would not suggest something of that nature. I think that what happens or what needs to happen in an environment like that is making sure that that information about what advantages that financial software system has been lending itself to with the staff members here that are going to use it the most before ever taking a look at any kind of a purchase. Making sure that we're able to do, if we can do that, a trial run with that software, and maybe load that up and take a look, and do some practice work or logistical work with that to see what happened, and why background, with different systems or equipment, we've been able to do that from a vendor, obtain a trial version of whatever it was, and then going to utilizing it and actually see hands-on whether or not it squares up to anything better than what we're already utilizing. I would suggest in that circumstance, selecting two or three staff members that have requisite financial knowledge, and are able to navigate, they're quick on their feet, and they can get into this new system, work with it, and actually provide input, meaningful input, on whether or not this appears something to be worthwhile as far as all of the different components of county financial business, in which there's many, many of those. What does this new program have, and what's it lacking? And if that selection was made for that particular new software, making sure that that company, that vendor, provided the necessary training, and provided sufficient training X number of occasions until that was accomplished and the people using that system felt confident with it. I don't like to experiment, generally speaking in my background, open to new ideas and new suggestions, but when you're dealing with something that's timeless and is critical as far as its level of importance, and it's the county software system, financial software system, I think we have to be very, very prudent about. We can move forward with the possibility, but let's take a good look at that, that's what I would recommend, run a trial version of it, have some people utilizing that, and then get that feedback from it, make a decision from that. Also, look outside of there, I think I would do that as well. There's, has to be with, for instance, BSNA. I'm certain that there are other entities using that software currently. There's nothing that says, myself, the finance director, multiple people can reach out and say, "Okay, what do you appreciate about this particular new software, and what do you enjoy about it?" And for each municipality, including Illinois and Ohio Valley, there may be different things that are of greater importance with financial reporting in Carolina. So, take a look at all of that and make a decision, and that's the route that I would take for something that interests me.
Thank you.
Well, we've asked our questions, and I think we're done with questions unless somebody has one, but we want to give you an opportunity to share anything you want or ask us a question or two.
Yeah, I did have a question, and that's, as a group, with regards to the implementation and standing up of our departments. How does this body, this Commissioner Dottie feel, if that's advanced, or satisfied with the progress of that, those efforts to this point? And I guess, what is it that you feel is, from your perspective, is the greatest component of making sure that that does reach fruition and it's accomplished?
Anybody want to answer that?
I think, I think we stumbled, obviously, so it's not easy to say, "Well, we just messed this all up a lot." I don't want to be candid, but I mean, we've struggled with this, we haven't done it well. So, we need some help to get this done, and I think that's a whole big part of why we're looking for a certain set of skills, both financial and administrative, to get there. I mean, it's not uncommon knowledge that we haven't done the best with this. I don't know exactly how to answer your question, other than that, and say, we need someone to lead us through this.
I think we're united, both at the staff level and the board level, that if we do it right, we want to do it right.
Right. Yeah. Thank you. I mean, I didn't want to be all dooming, but it's...
And make it very clear, too, that, you know, it, we have been very, very, very fortunate in this county to have had the clerk overseeing our finances in all those years, and did it exceptionally, exceptionally well. And so, by no, by no fault of hers or her staff's, same with HR, it's just, it was a heavy load, and she's just done it exceptionally well all those years. So, this is, this is a new step, and everything said I would echo. It hasn't been done well. I would absolutely agree with that.
And the constituents are looking at us, watching us very closely, so extremely important for us to pick the right person.
But I guess echoing Chairman Russell, I mean, I think there is a sense, okay, let's get this done, everyone's pretty much on board, it's just us to pick the right leader to lead our way through this, and that's what I think our charge is here. So, I think there's, I mean, probably someone coming in now has one of the more optimal points than other people. There's kind of like, all right, let's, let's get this done. So, I think everybody's there, it's just, it's just finding the right person to get us there.
And we ought to acknowledge that Kathy's been with us all along and helping us get there, and will continue to be here to help us get there.
Thank you, Kathy.
Do you have a, I'd like to follow that, do you have a time table that you'd like to actually see this buttoned up, or is that still somewhat...
Two years ago would have been absolutely perfect.
Over two years now.
When you're done, we're going to have a very short meeting with Mr. Janik and decide how to proceed, and he will be in touch very soon. We had four interviews today, we've had no time to process any of them. So, I don't anticipate that we're making decisions today, except how we're going to proceed.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for coming.
Hope I had an opportunity to join you and continue yourself.
And you're much more than a super cap. Could we take a five-minute...
Thank you, Mr. Belcher.
Thanks, Kip.
I think that's on, it's green now, isn't it, or red? It's just not red, right? Okay, I'm back on.
Everybody's microphone on?
Yes.
We'll reconvene, and Chuck, you want to...
We've had four candidates, different backgrounds, and Mr. Russell, I'm glad your math hasn't booted two weeks ago. You were correct all the time on the four candidates, so it's good.
I reversed it this morning.
You did a good job. So, part of the process was the, all the place had opportunity to meet with the candidates upstairs. Not many took advantage of that, very few actually came. The ones that did come, did have an option if they wanted to put in any ready, and so what I did is I compiled all those comments here and each other passed it again.
Can I ask, did you do that for previous administrators? Have that opportunity for the staff to interact with them, or is this new?
Were you preliminarily, or would I do the sort of...
Here, here. So, the staff...
I don't think that's happened. It didn't happen when I was elected.
No, we did that.
Did you do that with the...
Yeah.
I don't remember if you got...
And they were given plenty of time, notice?
They were given notice last week, this morning, however you might have...
But I think we did it in here, and we had...
Well, everybody...
More people came.
You never know what schedules allow. I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just curious whether, I mean, all this is recorded, right? So, everyone in the staff can review it. I mean, part of if they came or not, maybe their idea of whether we're going to listen to what they had to say to begin with.
I can tell you that Tom was making me my subtle voice.
So, maybe, maybe the way to get more information is to tell them, we'd like to hear from them, let them watch the interview, and invite that.
Can we, can we do that now?
You can do whatever.
I mean, I'm just asking if that's, if someone wants to have as part of the process. It's not going to tell us what to do, but I wouldn't mind hearing from, I'm asking...
She can't hear.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking whether, actually posturing that I think it would be a good idea to have staff's input on these people, they could watch this interview, and, you know, that's not, doesn't mean it's going to be determinative to us, I mean, we don't have to, you know, but it's a piece of information.
On the other hand, what we have to be careful of is some people are really good at rounding up people to, we can't make that judgment.
I mean, I, I mean, if you start that way, then you can't ask anyone ever, anything ever. I mean, that's...
Transparency, wanting to be a team, I think we have to give them one more chance and just, I hope it wasn't that they were thinking we wouldn't listen. That really upsets me.
You could have, either sent out an email, depending when you want to meet again, see a feedback by a certain date, she could compile all that and give us the...
Well, on a date, on a special date, I'm, Doug is going to be gone tomorrow.
I apologize, but I have a board commitment, I cannot move, so...
And I don't see any reason that we have to meet until a special meeting right before the board meeting next week.
What day will that be?
Tuesday.
Well, just to know, I will not be available tomorrow, getting married next week, so...
I think we can let you off the hook.
Just so you know.
And Tuesday...
Tuesday, I will not be available Tuesday.
Yeah, and it's Senior Expo Day, so...
But Expo gets over at two, and then we'll help clean up, and it'll be done by three.
You're talking about making candidates wait eight days to, before we select? If we do or not? I mean...
We've got one commissioner gone today, and we've got one going to be gone tomorrow, so...
I mean, if there's another date after that, just tomorrow does not work.
Or about the end of the week.
Yeah.
One, that's not a good point, to have, because I've got on the flip side, I'm a candidate exclusive, and I'm out there, you guys never have to wait, and don't wait eight days.
So, I'm okay with that, I can look at the schedule and see, but the other thing I want to bring up is, we've asked these guys a lot of questions, what would these people say if we asked them? And they've told us what they tell us they would say. But no one in this room has called and asked people, "What do you say?" I've never hired anyone without checking references directly. And so, that's not a background check, it's not a legal check, that's just, the legal check is a given. But I can't believe that we would proceed without somehow putting together something, I mean, if you're going to make a recommendation next Friday, somewhere between, or this Friday, somewhere between now and then, we have to set up a structure to say, "Okay, I want to, I want to talk," or whatever kind of, whatever kind of assembly, again, it's just me, but I can't believe we would move without making some calls and checking on some things on all of these people. Because there's some interesting stories with all of them.
I would suggest you not do them for, narrow down to two.
Absolutely.
And then do the background search of the two candidates, which is a common practice.
Yeah, I guess I've...
Would it make some sense here to hear everybody's top two candidates?
If you want to take a straw full, yes, you can do that. Yeah, if there's agreement, I'll furnish to the candidates and keep the process going. You don't want to do full background checks on all people.
Yeah, and again, I guess a, the background check is a different thing than checking references.
Well, I think two would be easier, gentlemen.
Agreed, I just want to make sure we're using the right analytics, or not, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even want to send someone for a background check to have gone through the references and agree that there's...
If there's not support for a couple candidates, don't even have them do it.
Agreed.
Well, let's just go around, and everybody share their top two.
If they have to, right? If some of those I have two, yeah, out to two, I would say.
You ready to take, take talent, Michelle?
Yep.
Good. Melinda, do you want to start?
Um...
So, the other option we have, if you wish to, you could do it, straw down again, and just put your name on it. Because sometimes people don't feel comfortable being first or being the last.
Or a little worse.
I don't have a problem.
I don't mind.
Okay, just, just give me an option. You want to do that?
Everybody feel comfortable just sharing?
Well, I'll share a first one, and that's Tracy Byard, Baird, is my first. Or a, one of my first, I should say.
I got, he's writing, he's writing.
Yep. Is there a work next?
I got to say, Belcher and Tracy.
I have two, Belski and...
I'm sorry, you said, I'm sorry.
I just said one, Belski. Kamala says Bel, Belski and Belcher.
Yeah, I'm going to echo those two, but I want to say I have reservations about all four. I have less reservations about those two, but I'm going to go with Belski and Belcher.
I'm sorry, Doug, who, who yours?
Michael Bel...
Belski and Belcher. Belski and Belcher.
I am going to echo that as well. I, I did, I did not support, would not like to continue with the two, the second and the third interview.
So, Belski...
You know, my, Ms. Byard, I wish had names.
I'm sorry, Tracy and...
Did you say no one?
Tracy and Mark, I think.
No, no, Belski and Belcher.
Okay, those are your two?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mark Justin's been eliminated? Is his name in that?
I think so.
I, you know, I had him down, but things changed. Nice guy, but I ran into a weakness that I really didn't know he had, and, yeah, it's...
Well, the reality is, you have one job opening. You could be nice people, but at the end, you have one opening position, and you do have to narrow it down. This is the harder part.
Yeah.
You know, getting to eight was easy.
And I would like to say...
I'm going to be 100% honest, I'm not sure I'm ready to offer that job, either of the two people that I've mentioned. I mean, you asked me to just give two names, but I can't tell you I'm comfortable with either of them right now. I mean, I, and again, I guess, we got to get this right, and if it don't feel like all things firing all cylinders, then...
We could do it again.
We do it again, and I'd rather do it again than do it wrong. We've done too much wrong, and so...
And I like, you know, Kip, Kip Belcher, I wish she had interviewed a year ago. But we said, we changed this position to include CFO, and I don't see how we can justify hiring somebody with none of those skills.
No, but...
Limited.
Limited, yeah. We can't justify changing the position if we're not going to look for somebody with different credentials. He's a, he'd be a wonderful administrator, but we, we've changed that.
You limited it to two, what's the, what's the process, who gets involved in reaching out and checking on these two?
I would do that, and you did, myself, with consultation with the board chairman. I would do that, and usually it's myself with consultation with the board chairman, or if he wants to, you don't want all of you doing it, though.
No, no, I'm just asking what the process is, so.
Either the board chairman, or the board chair doesn't have something to do with it.
And so, you, are we allowed to reach out to people who we know these people? Or are you the only one?
Just be careful of that, because I'm not sure what happened, but sometimes people ask their own questions and call the chairman. I would say limited to myself and whoever else you can.
Could we ask any, and I'm going to ask everybody this.
And then, Kim, question there, if you wanted to go through one of these.
So let you know what, okay, thank you.
So we don't have, we have just ten votes so far.
So if you go all the results, four of you have listed Mr. Belski, Michael Belski, four of you listed Kim, Kim Belcher, and two, only two listed...
Yeah, that's like ten, so I only gave one, and somebody else must have only given one.
Yep, Elgaire, Gwen did bow only one, and you did only one.
So, well, it is, of the two, if I were to do a second one, it'd be Mr. Bel, Mr. Belcher. Of the two...
If only two of you have picked Tracy. Do you want to make a, obviously, the other ones have supported the majority, can't...
Well, you know, she, she brings administrative experience already, she has that. And she also has the financial that I thought we were looking for. She, she's been doing amendments and transfers and, and, you know, working with the funds already. She has that inside knowledge of what she would be overlooking, and that was the reason I put her at the top. She has both of what I thought we were looking for.
I'm going to, I'm going to agree with you, Commissioner Lautner, but I guess I, you know, having had to do interviews myself for the last thirty-some years and trying to trust the intangible part of the interview, and having made a lot of mistakes when I do it, I just, I, and again, she, she probably, I just didn't see, and I tried to drag the energy level I wanted to see to do what needed to be done. I think, I mean, as far as dotting i's and crossing t's, it was all there. It'd probably be if we didn't need a, like, someone to just move us forward along and have that zip or whatever. I just didn't, that, that's just what I didn't get, and that's, that's an intangible, it's not a measurable thing. I agree 100% as far as, as far as, you know, on paper, and her skill set is there, but I, that's just, that's just me, so.
No, I, I agree, but she didn't have the jump in and take charge attitude. You know, and Mr. Bilski, wow, what a, what a nice guy, but he's got so many ideas and plans and stuff, we ain't got time. He's over the top.
Yeah.
I mean, he'll have the governor's task force in here looking, I bet, no, we haven't got time.
Yeah, but he would bring some new ideas.
Yeah, oh, yeah, he sure would. A bunch of them.
Yeah, yeah.
But he, he said, he doesn't do them unless we want to do it. But he knows how to do things.
He's been handling lots of people for a long time, and people, you know, yeah.
How about, if, there's four, four people that have indicated Belcher, and four people that have...
Five, five Belcher, four Bilski.
So we could reach out this, between now and Friday, with a thorough, thorough, thorough reference check, and then come back on Friday for a special meeting to decide if we want to narrow it down from two to one, or two to zero, and how we wanted to proceed. I can, I cannot see proceeding without at least one more opportunity to meet with the finalist. Because I, because we got to get to seven, we got to get seven people excited about whoever we hire.
Ten o'clock on Friday?
You know, I guess Jamie isn't here to...
She can usually do ten.
Can she? Okay, I mean, I just, I feel bad if she wasn't able to be, because she had to leave.
Does that work, Michelle, for schedule?
I don't know, I think...
What, Friday at ten?
Yeah.
Sure.
And we're just called?
It's a special session.
Yeah, it's a, are you, you want a special session, just a committee?
Well, we would be doing action, they said whether to go for two or none, or one, or so...
And would this board feel comfortable with me working with Chet to do the reference check?
Yeah, I think we need to do that.
And we'll talk about how we do that together.
Do you read them?
We're waiting for the form.
No, I didn't.
Is that, is that a plan?
Yes.
Sounds like a plan.
Friday, Thursday, Sunday, Sunday?
Oh, I didn't. But...
We could sign the form tomorrow, right, Michelle?
Oh, we can sign the form tomorrow, right.
Yes. What's, what's your agenda?
Just your, um, um, discussion, I just won't be answering either. I just texted out potential...
She's not going to make the meeting?
Not tomorrow. Her and Rex will both be gone by this level four.
County...
I'll call her.
Okay, good.
Motion to adjourn.
So the, just to summarize then, Chet and I will work on references for the Bilski and Belcher, and we'll have a meeting at ten o'clock to crew the plan, next steps. We'll sign the form tomorrow.
Okay.
So moved.
Public comment.
Well, we do have to cuff, I'm sorry.
Oh, public comment.
Come on up and tell us something.
Since you're the only one, we'll give you ten minutes.
One vote, one person.
I bet, I bet Zach wants to say it.
The rest of us are giving you five, but...
You want to make public comment? Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Chet, thanks for the nightmare.
Commissioner comments?
What do you want to do with these?
Commissioner comments?
Chet, what do you want to do with these?
Do you need that?
I'm going to table right now, you're already got your tablet.
I have to follow the agenda. Are there any commissioner comments?
No.
No.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Done. We are adjourned.
See y'all later.
Too much, too much.
My birthday week.
Yeah, it is, that's...
Birthday week.
I have a friend who's in, she's eighty...